We're here today for a workshop featuring health and safety guidelines presented by our Florida Department of Health representatives, Angela Smith and Jennifer Ross. Welcome to both of you. Followed by that will be our review of our regular agenda and a capital project update and some change order memos. After that, we have the East Lee County Education Cooperative Letter for the Good of the Order. At this time, it's 12:59 PM and I'll welcome everybody and I'll turn it over to Dr. Atkins in case he has any introductory comments. Dr. Atkins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do just a couple of comments. Just want to first of all say, the Department of Health has been wonderful through this whole process and working with the school district with its reopening plan. You know, we are obviously educators. We are not the healthcare and medical experts. So we really have enjoyed a great deal of community partnership with with our Department of Health and also with with Lee Health. They've they've been strong partners and then also local doctors, pediatricians and physicians. So I just can't express enough how appreciative I am that they have stepped up and really helped our school district with its some of the most difficult decisions that we've ever had to make. So they've also graciously agreed to be here today to help us with this presentation with very little, you know, very short notice to talk to us about contact tracing and and answer your questions. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Angela Smith and Jennifer Roth and they'll take us through the presentation. But ladies, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you so much, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you. Welcome.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to come talk with you. We hear a lot about contact tracing in the media and all the experts are talking about it. And I think it warrants taking a look at what exactly is contact tracing? How does that process work, especially in the context of a school setting? And so we hope to kind of walk you through that process, tell you a little bit about what we do, what our role is, and then give you the opportunity to ask any specific questions of us that you might have. We started out with four contact tracing staff at the beginning of this response. We now have 78 staff that are dedicated to contact tracing and we're actually posting 78 additional positions to add to that for a total of 156. All of those positions are incorporated into our epidemiology division that is headed by our Director of Communicable Disease, which is Jennifer Roth. And Jennifer is going to walk you through kind of that process, how her staff coordinate and operate in a contact investigation. Turn it over to Jennifer now.
Jennifer, please unmute.
Yeah, hello. Sorry. Thank you for this opportunity. I really appreciate that. Hold on one second. Let me just work out the...
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that I think you guys have an echo. I'm hearing some... Daryl, I don't know if you caught that.
I think we might have fixed it. Is that better?
Much better. Thank you.
I apologize. We're trying to share the same Wi-Fi over here while we're meeting our six feet apart. We want to practice social distancing. So we're echoing down the hall from each other, I think. So I saw the presentation was up on the screen as somebody sharing the PowerPoint we sent over. Thank you so much. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead then and get started. I just want to kind of go over very generally our process and then allow you all to ask questions as you need to at the end. Angela and I are happy to answer any questions you have. So we actually have two main goals of contact tracing. So that's going to be, we want to be able to identify people who have close contacts to a confirmed or a probable case. And we want to be able to do this quickly so that we can ensure that all of these contacts are notified and that they can self-quarantine and monitor for any symptoms themselves. So if we go to the next slide, I have a nice little infographic that the state has put together. And this is kind of a big overview of what we do for contact tracing. I'm actually going to come back to this slide again after I go through all of the pieces. So that way you can kind of review it after we've broken each step down. But you can see we have a nice little workflow set up here. And again, the goal is to quickly find contacts so that we can isolate them. And we may not have been able to prevent the very first instance of exposure, but once we unidentify all of those contacts, we can isolate them and then reduce the spread further. So if we go to the next slide, very generally, the steps of contact tracing. So the Department of Health, we're notified of all positive cases. It's actually written in Florida statute and Florida administrative code that every physician, laboratory, hospital, any kind of healthcare provider is required by law to report all all labs for COVID-19. So that includes positive and negative labs. So we are identified of positive cases. As soon as they test positive, we're transmitted that information from a variety of healthcare providers. Of course, people will also call us if they have suspect cases or if someone is a symptomatic person and being positive or a contactual positive case. We will get notified some way of the positives. As soon as we find the case, we assign it to an investigator. And so that was what Angela was referring to, the number of staff that we have assigned for contact tracing. We are rapidly increasing our capacity as fast as we can. So we assign those cases and the investigator basically has to interview the case to determine when that case might have been infectious to others, how they might have been exposed, and then most importantly, who they might have exposed during their infectious period. And that's really the the main piece of contact tracing. We have to get the individual information from each case and we use that to determine when they were infectious to others and how many other people they might have exposed during that infectious period. Once we gather the list of all of the contacts that they might have exposed during their infectious period, we then call each one of those contacts, make sure that they are aware that they might have been exposed, and then we instruct them to quarantine. And quarantine is for 14 days after their last date of exposure. So we, you know, someone might be positive on July 1st and expose someone on July 1st and then but they may not go get tested for four more days and then we find out about it the next day. So by the time we hear about it, it could be July 5th, but the last date of exposure would be the first. So we have to take all of those pieces into consideration and and I'll show you the timeframe and a nice little graphic here in a second. After we've notified all of the contacts that they might have been exposed and we've instructed them to quarantine for 14 days, we then monitor them for the rest of their quarantine period. We either do the monitoring through phone or we have a text message program. And we do this monitoring because we want to know if someone develops symptoms. And if that is the situation, we then encourage them to be tested as soon as possible. And we also instruct them to then isolate further so that as a symptomatic contact, they don't expose anyone else. So if you want to go to the next slide. So this is the this is the first step. So an investigator is assigned a case after we hear about a positive. And then we call the person and we need to figure out when were they infectious? When could they have actually have infected someone else with the virus? So the CDC has done a lot of research and actually this infectious period has changed over time. We've learned more and more about the virus. And so we have been able to better understand how long someone can be infectious. And so this guidance was actually just updated last week by the CDC. So cases are considered infectious to others for 48 hours before their symptoms start. So if someone was, you know, started to feel bad today, July 27th, when we called them and they said, "My symptoms started July 27th", we would consider them to be possibly infectious to other people starting on July 25th, 48 hours beforehand. So that's when we start considering someone infectious to other people. We consider them to continue to be infectious to other people for at least 10 days since their symptoms have started. And then at the end of 10 days, as long as they haven't had a fever for the past day and all of their other symptoms have improved, we consider them to be no longer infectious. So it's two days before your symptoms start, at least 10 days after they've started. But if you're symptomatic for a long time, you know, you could not feel well for a week or two weeks, then we bump that out because we want to make sure that you're no longer actively symptomatic. So it's this timeframe that we work off to determine who else you might have exposed. So if I started feeling bad today on a Monday, I would consider myself infectious for the past two days, which would be Saturday and Sunday. So hopefully, if I felt bad when I woke up this morning and didn't go to work and I called my boss, and then if I found out I was positive tomorrow, it wouldn't have exposed anyone because I would have been out of work Saturday and Sunday. We're not in the office. And I didn't come to work when I felt bad with my symptoms starting. So if I were to interview myself in this situation, I would have no contacts at work because I was not in the office during my infectious period. I stayed home when I was sick and then I got tested right away. And so I knew to continue to stay out for the rest of the 10 days that I might be infectious to other people. However, if I became symptomatic tomorrow and then I called my boss and he said, "I'm not coming into work because I don't feel well", I would have been symptomatic or infectious two days beforehand. So I would have been symptomatic then yes, today and yesterday. So if Tuesday morning I wake up and I don't feel good, I might have had exposures and contact in the office on Monday. So, you know, a lot of people ask us questions very specifically about who needs to be out and and how long they might have been infectious to other people. But it really is a case-by-case basis. We have to get that initial case interview done so we can determine when someone's symptoms started. That and that is what we use to work our infectious period. I have a little note at the bottom, though. I know a lot of people say, "Oh, well, I was asymptomatic" or "Some people do get tested without having any symptoms." So if that is the case, we just use the date of the test as a proxy for symptom onset. So it's still the same time period, 48 hours before and 10 days after. But instead of using symptom onset date, we use the date of the test instead if someone reports having no symptoms at all. So if you go to the next slide, I have all of that broken down into a little picture that we made to kind of hopefully teach our new staff, all of our staff that we're onboarding here very quickly. We put it in a graphic here to kind of help them figure out infectious period and learn this as quickly as possible. So again, you'll see at the top, the person, whenever their symptoms started for two days before is when we would consider them infectious to others. And for at least 10 days afterwards, they would still be considered infectious and possibly able to transmit the virus as long as by that 10th day, they've had an improvement in symptoms and they haven't had a fever for the past day. If they get to day 10 and they're still symptomatic, which can happen, then we just we just have to follow that case until they are no longer symptomatic. And then at the bottom, there's the asymptomatic isolation period. So that's just working off the date of the test rather than the date of symptoms. And if you never develop any symptoms in the whole timeframe that you're tested, then day 10 is considered your last day of your infectious period and you can go back to work. So our ultimate goal when we're calling cases is to figure out when they started being infectious to others so that way we can identify anyone they might have come in contact and then get them isolated for the rest of their infectious period so that they don't expose anyone else until we consider them to be non-infectious and we can lift isolation after day 10. So if you go to the next slide, so exposure. So we've called the case, we figured out when their symptoms started, we've worked out their infectious timeframe, and then we've asked them, "Okay, for your infectious timeframe, who did you come in contact with?" And then, so that's when we start the contact tracing piece of it. So here I've got my definition. Contacts are considered exposed if they were less than six feet from a positive case for more than 15 minutes during the infectious period. So this is, you know, a good rule of thumb. I think it's people are very aware that six feet is what we use for our social distancing criteria. We now said it's more than 15 minutes. So, you know, brief passing interactions are less likely to result in some kind of a transmission. However, if I was interviewing someone who was sick and they said they went to get tested and they coughed in the face of the nurse who was doing their test, they might have only been with that person for 60 seconds, but a very, you know, direct kind of contact would be concerning. We would be worried that a sick person coughed directly into your face. So we take all of that into account. So the the less than six feet for more than 15 minutes is a really good rule of thumb. But we do evaluate each contact to determine whether or not there was a possible risk of transmission. So we don't just, that's not a blanket statement. We do have to evaluate on a case-by-case basis the type of interaction that the case might have had to their contacts. So if you go to the next slide, I have kind of a visualization. I think sometimes it's difficult to really visualize what exposure means. I know that at stores, a lot of places have done a really great job of measuring out six feet in the line so that you can you can see how far you need to stay away from people. But I know it can be hard. Sometimes we interview someone and they said, "Well, I was across the table from them while I was eating dinner." Is your table six feet wide? Many, many tables are not six feet wide. They're only maybe three or four. So it's important to really understand kind of the level. And and this is when we sometimes get into kind of the nitty-gritty with our our patients when we're interviewing them about how far were they, you know, how long was it? You know, I tried to visualize six feet and I think if I, you know, I'm 5'8", so if I lay down on the floor, I still would not hit six feet. So, you know, you've got to kind of visualize it. And the CDC has this really nice graphic, which they actually changed a little bit since they've gone through some updates with their exposure criteria. But I like this graphic because you can see very clearly that if you were on an airplane, pretty much everyone has been on an airplane at some point in their life, anyone who's within two rows of you would be within six feet. And so all of those people, if you were sick and you were on an airplane, all of those people would be considered exposed. And we would have to alert them that they might have been exposed and need to quarantine. So I think this is a really good visualization, especially when you're thinking about the classroom. Obviously, the students are not sitting so packed together like they are in an airplane. But it's a good way to kind of think about how a sick person might spread within kind of a 360-degree range. So if you go to the next slide, this is this is the quarantine period graphic. So I showed you the one for the infectious period. And this is where people get a little confused about the two timeframes that we have. So we call the case, we ask them when they were sick, so that way we can figure out how long they have been infectious to other people. But when you're actually exposed and we are interviewing people and we find out about their contacts, it's a 14-day quarantine period. And that's because it can take up to 14 days from the time you are exposed until the time you can develop symptoms and then start that infectious period timeframe. So if I'm sick tomorrow and I, you know, don't do a good job of social distancing today, if I wasn't, you know, six feet away from my boss and I found that that I'm sick, someone will call my boss and say, "Hey, you were exposed on Monday and you need to quarantine for 14 days." And that is again, because from the day that you're exposed to the day that you might show symptoms could be up to 14 days. So that's, it's a pretty long timeframe and we have definitely seen people become sick on day 14 after an exposure. So exposed contacts need to quarantine for 14 days and then they can return to work or school as long as they remain asymptomatic. So like I mentioned, we do monitor all exposed contacts for 14 days either via phone or text program. And we're doing that because we want to make sure we know as soon as they become symptomatic. Because if they become symptomatic or they have any kind of, you know, cough, fever, shortness of breath, any of those symptoms before the 14 days is up, they are now concerned that they might have COVID. So they need to be tested and then we might need to treat them like a case. So we are monitoring them every single day. And as long as they go 14 days without having symptoms, they can go back to work or school. A lot of people ask us about testing. Do I need to be tested? And, "Oh, my gosh, I was exposed." And they immediately run out to be tested as soon as they find out that they have been exposed. But that is not actually something we recommend because if you are exposed today on Monday and you find out Wednesday you've been exposed and you run out to go get tested, well, that's only day two. It's only been two days in your incubation period. And it's up to 14. So just because you tested negative on Wednesday on day two does not mean that you will not end up being positive on day 10. So a lot of people want to go and be tested and they want to know if a negative test will get them back to work or school any earlier. And it won't. That's just the way the virus works. It can take 14 days. By the time you're exposed, the time you develop symptoms. So no matter what kind of tests you have before 14 days, you're not going back any sooner. So again, we have to be very careful and cautious when we are interviewing people that we figure out the exact day that they were exposed. If they were exposed over a time period where they might have been exposed to the same person for three days in a row, we take the last date of exposure. So if, you know, my friend is exposed to me Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday, I'm going to take Wednesday as the very last day because we want to be as cautious and as broad as possible when it comes to the risk for quarantining. So we would start the quarantine after the last date of exposure and it would be for 14 full days regardless of their tests. And we would not let them go back until day 14 has passed and they've remained asymptomatic. If they become symptomatic, then we have them be tested and then they might have to be treated as a case. But since they were in quarantine, hopefully, they haven't exposed anyone else. And that at the end of the day is really the goal of contact tracing. We may not have been able to prevent that initial exposure, but then all of those contacts, if they were to become cases, they're all home and isolated and quarantined anyway. So even if they become sick, there is no further spread. You've stopped the spread with that one round of transmission. And that is our that is our ultimate goal here with contact tracing. So if you go to the next slide, that is our little graphic. I said we would go back to that again. So you can see at the top, a confirmed case. We make sure that they're isolated so they don't expose anyone else. We interview them to determine their infectious period. Then we ask about what contacts they had during their infectious period and we monitor them for 14 days after their last date of exposure. If a contact ends up having symptoms, we ask them to be tested and then that way we can move them. You'll see in the the first left-hand graphic, we move them into the whole case process and they become a positive case. And then we ask about their contacts and we keep going until we hopefully have stopped transmission. If a contact right there in the middle after 14 days shows no symptoms after their quarantine period, that ends and they can go back to work or school. And then if we miss the contact, that's, you know, kind of our biggest concern is that we may not get them all. And therefore, we need to try to find as many as possible because if we miss a contact, then they could be out there. They could be infecting others if they are unknowingly infected and they're not appropriately isolating because they were unaware of their exposure. And then finally, the very last one says if a contact shows is symptoms or is positive, again, they're confirmed and we ask about their contacts. And if there's no further contacts, then there's no further spread. So we've done our job with contact tracing. So I think that was my last slide. I say, it's a lot of me talking. And I know sometimes the timeframes can get a little confusing. So I, you know, last, the last slide, actually, the the very next one is a link to our data. And hopefully, you're all familiar with our dashboard. So in here, and we can make sure that you have the individual links in your email if you would like. But this is the statewide dashboard. And this is found on our COVID-19 website, which is also full of some really great information. And you can break this down by county and even the cases you can break down by zip code. So if you go here, you know, and kind of play through the dashboard, you can see the number of cases we've had, the number of deaths, also all sorts of health metrics about people going to the hospital with COVID-like illness or influenza-like illness, zip code data, testing data. There's a lot of good information here. So if anyone has any questions about the dashboard or would ever like us to walk you through it, we are more than happy to do kind of a one-on-one tutorial on the how to get information and data out of the dashboard to help inform your decisions. So I'm going to mute myself and let you all ask any questions that you might have of us.
Okay. I'm trying to find the participant list. Okay, I have Chris Patrici with a question, please.
Madam Chair, I actually have a bunch of questions. Who notifies the DOH? Do we notify if a student is sent home with symptoms or is that up to the student and the family?
Please unmute.
Ms. Smith, I show you unmuted, but I don't have audio.
Her icon looks muted to me. Jennifer, can you unmute? I can't hear her. I know, I can't hear her and her. It doesn't work to be here. Oh, mine looks muted.
No, it doesn't.
Mrs. Roth, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you can you not hear us?
We can now.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Now.
Mrs. Roth, if you could keep your mic open, please.
Jennifer and Angela, we cannot hear you.
I'm just going to unmute.
Now we can.
You got to leave it open. You got to leave it open, Jennifer. Don't don't mute your microphone. Keep it unmuted.
Okay. So the official, now I'm hearing feedback. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can.
Are you able to hear me now? Okay. So the official notification process will happen through a laboratory or a physician's office at the time of a positive result. We would like to build an infrastructure where your school nurses have a level of comfort and they're able to call points of contact directly at the health department when they do send a child home that is suspicious, has COVID-like symptoms. So that would expedite, you know, the process for us to be able to work with you to take measures and and make sure that we're isolating appropriately. But the official notification happens through the physicians and the laboratory at the time of a positive lab result.
So then you're not notified if if somebody's showing symptoms and we have to send them home to quarantine for 14 days?
There's nothing in the law that would make... There's nothing in the law that would, uh, make.
We cannot hear you, Angela. I think you're having technical difficulties. We're not hearing you.
This is Smith and Mrs. Roth. Roth, if you can hear me, please use one of the dial-in numbers in the invitation to call into the conference. I'll let you in.
I don't think they hear you. I don't think, Daryl, I don't think they hear you. Um, Jennifer, can you hear me? It looks like Angela is calling. If this doesn't work out, can we have, can we email them our questions?
Madam Chair, I'd be a little bit uncomfortable with that because part of the reason for having them here today was for the public to hear their answers from them as opposed to us being the go-between. So I'd really like to try to resolve this if we could.
Thank you. Can you hear us?
Mrs. Smith, can you hear us now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I apologize. Okay, so let's start over with the question. Um, because I think I may have misunderstood it with all the technical glitches. You were asking about the requirement to report, to pick up the phone and call when you send a child home that's ill that you suspect having COVID. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so there is no requirement. We would surely welcome that relationship with, uh, the school district and we can dedicate, um, at these staff that, uh, the school nurses are able to call, um, should they feel they have a child that is suspicious of, um, having COVID. The official requirement for reporting is only when there's a laboratory confirmed case. So if we're able to set something up where someone is able to call, uh, one of our staff and, and identified a suspect, uh, individual, we would welcome, you know, that opportunity to begin that process that much quicker.
Okay, and do you have a team in your office dedicated to the school district? Or are all one hundred and thirty-six employees just general Lee County contact tracers?
So we have right now seventy-eight staff. Of the seventy-eight staff that are being brought on board, some of them are going to be dedicated to work with the school district as well as, um, some other large employers and congregate settings that we have in the community. So yes, they will be, uh, school district specific.
Okay, and then, um, any cold-like symptoms, as I read this, it, it seems to me that any cold-like symptoms, if I have a cough and a runny nose, um, I have to isolate, miss school, miss work for ten days. Is that a fair conclusion?
No. So if you are symptomatic, what, what the course of action should be that you're consulting with your physician, you're being tested if you feel that it's suspicious for COVID-like illness. Uh, we wouldn't just take someone out of school or work for a period without knowing that it definitively was COVID that we were, uh, dealing with. Because as you mentioned, a lot of the symptoms are common amongst, you know, hay fever, uh, influenza, the common cold. So we would want to have that individual tested to, uh, determine if they were in fact positive for COVID.
Right, and that leads to a concern on a couple of different levels with, um, some of the, um, some of the students in our district might not have access to healthcare. And the free COVID testing places are only testing people over the age of eighteen. And they might not be able to go to a doctor and get a strep test and prove it's not COVID. So is there any kind of a community organization or a community, um, health plan put together to help kids so that they don't have to miss school with a cold?
Sure. The Florida Department of Health has pediatric clients. We have at our Michigan location.
Okay, is, and that's the only location? So like a kid out in Lehigh would have to travel all the way down to Michigan Ave?
We are actually preparing to be a little more mobile in our testing efforts. So, uh, very shortly, we will be able to bring those services into the community.
Okay, um, I just have a couple more questions. Um, uh, so there was a graphic in there and I don't remember seeing it. It might have been in my backup materials and then you took it away, but there was a graphic in there that showed, um, who would have to quarantine on an airplane? Do you remember that graphic? Is there any chance you could provide a graphic showing a classroom? A classroom with kids who are three feet apart and kids who are five feet apart and kids who are six feet apart? Because I think that would be far more informative to our parents as they're making decisions about sending their kids back to school.
Make sure we're on the same line. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
That's right. Okay, I think someone overwritten us on the communication. You can hear me correctly, yes?
Yes.
So, um, okay, so I would say that, uh, yes, we can happily provide you, you know, extra graphics. Um, but what I would say is, you know, it's at all possible, it would be, you know, we can show you the different setups and then, you know, it'd be the best practice to try to get the desks to be at least six feet apart. I know not every classroom, especially in the younger ages, they don't all have desks. They sit at communal tables. Um, so it's a little bit more difficult to kind of, you know, see that. So, you know, we're happy to, to provide that information to you so you can make informed decisions. And at all possible in, in classrooms where you have desks that you can put apart, if you're able to, you know, decrease the size of the, you know, number of desks in the room so that they can be at least six feet apart, you know, you'll see that that will be the, the least amount of risk exposure and therefore the least number of students who would need to be quarantined or contacted in that situation.
Great. I'd, I'd really appreciate that. I think that, um, I think parents would appreciate that kind of graphic. Madam Chair, those are my questions for the DOH, but I do have some related questions for staff at the end, please. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I'll call on you later. Ms. Jordan?
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Patrica, because those were some of my questions. I really appreciate you asking those questions. Um, I also was a little bit, um, maybe I just misunderstood the, the one graph where it was showing the, um, a lot of times a fourteen days. So if you were, um, started counting your ten days, you go back two days, you start counting your ten days and then on, say, I mean, your fourteen days. But on the tenth day, you have a headache or sniffles or whatever, then you go to the doctors. It's recommended to go to the doctors and now begin again another fourteen days. So in essence, it could be like a whole month of them not being at school or work.
So if you have contact and, um, you have been, you know, told to quarantine for fourteen days, on day ten, you develop symptoms and so you go and get yourself tested and it turns out you're positive, then that's when you would start the, the ten days of isolation as an exposed person. So yes, theoretically, if you were quarantined for fourteen days, on day fourteen, you develop symptoms, um, we would then ask you to be out for another ten because you could still be infectious. So it is a possibility that someone could be out for up to twenty-four or more days, depending on how long their symptoms take to resolve.
Okay, so that, again, it would be a concern for us to make sure that our children are able to be educated, something like that were to happen. And then also, um, oh my goodness, I just lost my train of thought. Oh, okay, so once they, is there a, a negative test that they go back and receive to say, okay, it's gone now? That you're clear to go? Or we just assume it's gone?
So that guidance of when we release someone from isolation, that was, um, kind of broken down, that the ten days after your symptoms start as long as, uh, you've been twenty-four hours fever-free and had an improvement in your symptoms, that's the criteria that the CDC actually uses to officially say you are no longer infectious to other people. Um, so the, actually, just last week, the CDC has moved to using that strategy as opposed to using a test-based strategy. Uh, that is because we've actually found that people can intermittently shed the virus for weeks, even months sometimes. Um, some people will test, uh, positive over and over again. But the CDC, you know, and been working with a lot of researchers and they've really found that just because you test positive a month later, doesn't mean you're still infectious to others. What is happening is your body is kind of shedding dead pieces of virus. And the test itself is just looking for like the, the DNA of the virus. So, you know, it kind of used like a, a gross example, but if, if you took my DNA when I was alive and my DNA when I was dead, it would be the same DNA, you wouldn't, but you wouldn't be able to tell if I was alive or dead. And the same thing happens with the virus. The test is looking for the DNA. So just because you test positive does not mean you're still infectious. Um, so the CDC has moved to that at least ten days since symptoms started strategy because that is when they've been able to determine that people are no longer infectious anymore. So we, we do not recommend a, a retest at the end of the ten days.
Okay, so then you're saying that if you're posi, if you have symptoms and you're positive, then you're infectious. If you are positive and you have no symptoms, you are not infectious.
So you could still be infectious. Yeah, you could still be infectious. And that's why if, if we use the ten days from the date of your symptom onset, if you have symptoms, if someone were to be tested for some reason, um, you know, if they didn't have symptoms but decided to get tested and found out that they were positive anyway, that's when we use the data to test as, as a proxy really for the symptom onset. So we would just go ahead and consider you infectious for at least ten days after the date of your test, um, rather than your symptoms. It, it's very hard to define with asymptomatic people, so we like to be as cautious as possible. So we do consider you infectious for at least ten days after the date of your test.
Okay, thank you. And that's why people are so concerned because it's like, what is that end date? What does that even look like? So thank you for that. Thank you, um, Ms. Fisher.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Uh, Ms. Gittens?
Yes, good afternoon, everyone, and I asked that you, um, indulge me with the camera today. I have a sick doggy that just keeps running in and out and I have to check on him, so I apologize for that. Thank you for, um, thank you for your report. The question that continually keeps coming up from parents and, and even teachers, and I think it was slide eight that had the airline thing and I agree with Patrica. Had that laid out like a classroom, uh, better classroom and also, um, a portable classroom, that would be helpful. But they want to know, okay, if you, um, are, are symptomatic, but within that forty-eight hours or whatever, in other words, bottom line is, do, does the whole class need to be quarantined? Because you don't know if that one person has infected anybody else and they're within their forty-eight hours. So, and the way it was explained to me, it said some people were saying, well, why not then just, you know, do the whole class? That way we're not coming and then going and, and having group out and the next group come back. Especially if, if they, you know, don't show up within the forty-eight hours of somebody else. Do you understand the question?
I think, I think I understand what you're saying about, um, basically instead of quarantining just if, if people close by, if you were to do the whole classroom, so that way there was no confusion about the overlap of the timeframe? Is that kind of what you're asking?
Pretty, yes, pretty much, because then it ends up if some other child or even the adult in the classroom, makes it through those forty-eight hours, you, you have the other person quarantined, but someone else comes down with it. You, you understand how it could just continue to go and it would keep spreading.
Yes, so it is, I mean, it is plausible that if someone was tested, you know, someone is sick and then they decide, um, you know, they waited two or three days to be tested, other people could have already been exposed in the classroom and then they could be coming down with symptoms. Um, so our primary goal of contact tracing is to identify all of the people who might have been exposed originally, to go ahead and isolate them and get them out of the classroom. That might mean that it's not all of them, unfortunately. And we do take really into account all exposures, not necessarily just where they were sitting in the classroom, but, you know, again, whether or not they were getting up and walking around, were they, you know, doing some kind of group activities? Were they involved in any other situations outside of the classroom? If there was any kind of extracurricular activities or people or friends outside of school? Um, so we will take all of that into account and, you know, give you our, that recommendation on who we truly consider to be exposed and who needs to be out. And then, you know, you take that information and that is, you know, what we can provide is the most basic level of who we truly need, you know, who needs to be out. And then further contacts, if they do pop up, we go ahead and get them quickly isolated out as well. And unfortunately, it may be the case that you have several within a classroom and therefore the number of people you need to quarantine is in an, an entire classroom for two weeks because we are unable to truly say, yeah, these people meet the criteria. If there's ever any, uh, question or concern and we're not able to really define if there's an exposure or not, we always err on the side of caution and just go ahead and quarantine anyway. So if we ever have those questions where we're on the fence about an exposure, we always move towards the go-ahead and isolate them side because we want to be as careful and cautious as possible, especially with our children.
Okay, and, and two quick things. Thank you for that answer. Um, in the school settings, and I don't know if staff can address this later, but in some of the settings, they talk about, um, the children, you know, walking through the hall and going to lunch and going to different, um, areas, which is kind of increases that if it's within that forty-eight hours. And my final question, I guess, to do with that, you did mention earlier that a lot of the what-ifs and, and I, I honestly, I applaud you. I, I don't know how you actually make it through the day with all these, I mean, what-ifs coming at you, uh, and you gracefully handle it and thank you for that. But you did say that it's on a case-by-case basis. So if we're looking at, you know, thousands of kids coming back to school and, you know, thousands of different classrooms, how will there be enough tracers to make sure, did the child stay in a contained classroom? Did they go to lunchroom? Did they go to P E? You know, what did they do? It, it seems like a monumental job just to trace one situation. So thank you for that.
Is that it, Ms. Gittens?
Well, yes, I, I mean, I think she mentioned too with Ms. Patrica about the staff and some other people helping with the tracing. Is that, Ms. Roth?
So yes, our, our staff, we are specifically hiring, as Angela mentioned, an additional seventy-eight staff to help us with contact tracing. And we will be dedicating a portion of those staff specifically to schools and non-congregate settings. So that way we can have people who are kind of a, a very quick dial for your school nurses to reach out to immediately. And so that way we can get an overview of the situation right away. Um, you know, like you mentioned, there might be a variety of models of which the schools are kind of going back to session. Uh, if we learn that there's a suspect case out there right away from a nurse, that, uh, might seem kind of a, a very large contact investigation, then we can be prepared with our dedicated staff. Uh, it'll, you know, I think that would help us to get a good overview of what we're looking at. Are we looking at just one classroom cohort? Are we looking at a large, a large potential exposure? Um, I know if you want to touch on kind of like a mass gathering, what we would have to. So in a mass gathering situation where we cannot identify everywhere the person has been, um, we do have the ability to do a public notice. And that would look something like we just go to the media in collaboration.
And that would look something like we just go to the media in collaboration with the school district. And we say, there's been a case, we don't identify the individual, but we just say there's been a case that was identified that was at, say, the band concert on Wednesday night. And then everyone would know if they were at the band concert, they need to call the health department so that they can be assessed.
Okay, and then finally, I would just like to maybe mention a suggestion. Right now, a lot of people are out of work because the type of businesses that they are in are not functioning at this point. If you could somewhere post what are the qualifications for tracers? And if you're looking to hire tracers, that may be something that would be helpful to the community. If you're out of a job and there are non-medical physicians to help with the tracing, then that would definitely help some of our communities and some of our most hardest hit families in our community. And thank you. I'm done, Ms. Fisher.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Divinelli?
Thank you. I'll be quick. Actually, I'm gonna piggyback off of what Ms. Gittens said. So once you identify, like, someone had the, had symptoms. So, or let's say the nurse identifies there someone has the symptoms. At what point it's, do you contact or start the tracing? Do you do it once someone's tested positive or just at symptomatic? So, and so that was my, that was my concern. I actually was exposed twice and I found out like 11 days later that they tested positive. By that time, I had four days to go and, you know, so I hadn't, you know, no symptoms or nothing happened for me. But I mean, I think the reason why they waited is because they waited for the positive date and that's when they, but that, by that time was 11 days after I had been exposed to them. So there's where I'm, there's so gray there when someone should say, you know, or when someone should tell someone. So it's the communication aspect as well. So if you could just clarify that a little bit, please. Thank you.
Sure, so that's a very, that's a very good point. And so whenever this happens, you know, the initial, the very initial first case, like we mentioned, the symptoms are so broad. That's why we encourage people to be tested. So we recommend immediately isolating upon, you know, knowing that you have symptoms or determining that your child is symptomatic. So that way, as soon as that happens, we're only looking at the 48 hours before symptoms start. Another reason why we are ramping up our capacity to continue to test children and to be mobile in the community to be able to test them as quickly as possible. So that way we can reduce the amount of lag time. You know, your situation, unfortunately, I've heard multiple times where people might have felt sick. They weren't really sure. They didn't get better after a couple of days. So then they finally went to the doctor. Lab corps was on a week-long backlog, so we didn't hear they were positive until another eight days. And by the time we called someone who's a contact, their 14 days is practically over. So I think what we would really like to encourage with the, with the school district and the schools is really hammering home that message of if there's any symptoms in a child, to stay home and be tested, tested as soon as possible. I will say, a caveat to that is anyone who we know has been exposed to a confirmed case who then becomes symptomatic, we automatically are going to assume that person has COVID if they have a known exposure already. So in those situations, if someone was to become symptomatic, we wouldn't wait for a test. We would just consider them to be a probable case since they have a known exposure. Without any known exposures, we are just, we would really like to encourage people to be tested as soon as possible. And again, to go ahead and just isolate and stay home until you have the results of that test. If the child or the parent doesn't get them tested, we would then recommend that they do stay out for 10 days. So that way we can make sure that there's no further exposures. And unfortunately, flu season is coming up sooner than we'd like to admit. And so there will be plenty of cases where there's going to be people and children who have the flu rather than COVID. And so regardless of your symptoms, you should be staying home. Because we are, you know, concerned about the confusion between flu and COVID. So we are going to take a very low threshold of symptoms. And we're just going to encourage people to stay home as soon as they have symptoms and to be tested right away. And again, we are more than welcome to, more than happy to welcome children to our clinic as well as certain our mobile, our mobile testing ability to go in the community and test children as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you. So then one more question. So, um, once you've identified that a student may have COVID, then who actually, y'all will do the actual contract tracing, contact tracing? Or does that go fall back on to the district? That's, that was the other thing I wasn't sure about. Who actually does the tracing?
That's our very lucky job to do the tracing for you. Yes, we'll work obviously very closely with your school nurses. You know, so that way they can give us the information quickly about who might be on the list for us to call down. So I'm sure it will be a very close partnership for us to be able to gain lists and contact information from you all. But we'll be the ones making the calls and doing the contact tracing.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'm just going to mention that we are 23 minutes over time with these very busy ladies. And I just, hand up, and then I know, Ms. Patrica, you have questions. Do you want to reserve those for staff for later or?
Madam Chair, I'm really disappointed that we only have 30 minutes. This is a huge topic.
It is a huge topic.
Yeah, it's a huge topic. And I know that a lot of people are watching for answers. And so I don't know, as the chair, I'll leave that up to you. But, but I've got several questions for staff and I don't know if the DOH needs to be here to answer them as well.
Okay, so let me, let me go right to Ms. Jordan. Ms. Jordan, you have your hand up?
Yes, I'll be real quick.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Divinelli. I know you answered the question that I forgot. And that was about the timely testing, because that is a true concern. And it's great that we're having these mobile sites that are going to be put out there. But they're able to take the test. We need to figure, I don't know who's we, but we have to come up with some way in order to test the test, you know, to say what is, you know, to give back results at a quicker pace. Because to me, 14 days out, you know, you're sitting there, everything's going through your mind and, you know, you're isolated and then you have no, you know, it's not there. So I don't know, it's good to have the quick dial, but quick dials and mobile sites, if we cannot get the results back, that, that is an issue. So I just wanted to put that out there, because that to me, just like Ms. Divinelli said, you can be around a person, you have no idea, only 10 days, 11 days later, you know, bam. So I don't know what you all can do, but somehow I believe something needs to take place in that. So thank you for hearing me out.
Well, so we do have some good news in that regard. And that is the Bureau of Public Health Labs that we utilize for our specimen processing has actually increased capacity and the turnaround times are about 48 hours now, which is much improved over the seven to 10 days that we were seeing with the commercial labs. So we are pretty much exclusively using the Bureau of Public Health Labs at this time.
Perfect, thank you. That's, that's good to hear, really is. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Smith? And, yes, do you have anything else that you need to share with us before you conclude?
No, just that we are here to answer any questions that you all have. We know this is a monumental task, keeping the children and the faculty, you know, here in Lee County, safe. And we welcome the collaboration to assist you in doing so. So however we can be of assistance to you, if it's walking through the dashboard to look at data, if it's hashing out with some of these one-off scenarios, we're a call away and we're happy, happy to offer that help to you.
And we do appreciate that very much. I think that, let me then ask board members if there are any further questions. And Ms. Patrica, if you want to go ahead and proceed while Angela and Jennifer are still with us.
If Angela and Jennifer have time, do you have time?
Sure.
Okay, I failed to thank you, by the way, for being here today. I really, really appreciate this. I think, I think it's really important for the public to hear from you directly because you are handling this. And I don't, I'm not necessarily going to get the answers right, so not being the go-between is very helpful. My first question is, will we, and I think this is directed toward Dr. Atkins, will we be having our nurses or other employees contact the DOH with suspected cases? Are we working on protocols for that? How is that being handled at this point?
Beth With is our, is our contact person. So typically, I mean, I, our schools contact her and she gets in touch with the Department of Health. But, you know, these are protocols that we continue to refine, particularly as we look at, you know, larger numbers coming back.
Okay, but that, that's where it stands now. If I'm the school nurse at Pinewood's and I have a suspected case in my school, I'm calling Beth and Beth is calling the DOH.
I think I may have somebody from, yeah, Beth's coming up right now. Thank you.
You're welcome, Dr. Atkins. Ms. Patrica, that, that, we're working on some flow charts right now so that we can hone in on some processes so that we can have a flow once school starts back. I have been taking over that responsibility right now, just with the minimal amount of employees that are starting to come back in the district. But as school reopens, we're going to have a task force that's assigned to this project as well as help for me so that we can get that information and then I can report that to DOH.
Excellent. And, and this might be a piggyback on that question. I don't know that we as a board, and I'm, you may have provided it to me, Dr. Atkins, and I just didn't see it. But do we as a board have a feel for what the metrics will be used to determine whether a group of students needs to quarantine in a classroom, classroom needs to quarantine, a school needs to quarantine, or the whole district needs to shut down?
Ms. With?
I can answer that, Ms. Patrica. We're working on some metrics right now. We don't have the numbers available at this point. But we are looking at all factors. We're also reaching out to our community partners to help us decide some of those metrics.
Good, I appreciate that. And I, I know that you guys are working really hard and don't take that as a slam. Like, you don't have the answers yet. I just want to make sure that the, the question is asked and that the public knows we're, we're working on it and, and we will get those answers. So, two, two more questions. What if a teacher has to quarantine? So pretend I'm a teacher and I am contacted by the DOH and I have been exposed to someone who's positive. Now I have to quarantine. But the exposure didn't necessarily take place in a classroom. Who teaches that class?
That, that situation depends really on, you know, you could have an exposure and the person could be asymptomatic and, and be able to continue to teach virtually. Or if you have a case where somebody actually comes down and is ill, then we would have to have a substitute teacher for that classroom.
Okay, so in an elementary, let's say that the teacher has been exposed, but she's asymptomatic. In an elementary classroom, that seems easy. The kids go home and they, everybody switches to leave home connect. But in a high school or a middle school setting, that seems a little bit more complicated because that's just one teacher that has to quarantine and the, the kids are still in class for all of their other classes. So do we like have a monitor in that room while the teacher teaches virtually or how do we handle that?
I think, again, it depends, you know, on, on every situation, you know, in terms of who we have available staff-wise. I mean, that's, these are all the things that we continue to work on. You can imagine, you know, the hundreds of different scenarios that can happen when you start quarantining people. That's why, you know, I've been, I've been really, really clear about this, that, you know, this is, this is something that while we work on all these different types of scenarios that we can come up with, I think we probably will not have come up with every single one of them. And, you know, so, you know, we were learning to be very flexible and agile as we reopen. It will be rocky. I guarantee that. But I, I do think that, I do think that we'll be able to, to get through this and do it successfully. You know, it's a balancing act right now in terms of trying to figure out the numbers in terms of the number of, of kids that are coming back to school and the number of teachers that are able to come back. So Dr. Pruitt is really working on, on that particular plan. But I do think that, that we'll be able, I think we'll be able to get things covered, but it's going to be, it's going to be a challenge, to say the least.
One of the things that I'm going to be coming to you to request is to modify our guest teacher requirements and make it so that any of our paraprofessionals could at any moment transition to a guest teacher position and get that guest teacher pay. So we're working on that language in that request. So in addition to finding out which of our guest teachers are willing to come back and that we have training for them that they, that they will be taking, we also want to be able to allow any paraprofessionals that are ready, will be people that could immediately transition to a guest teacher role in a school site.
All right, thank you. And my last question is probably for Dr. Pruitt. So I understand that if a teacher has to quarantine, unless there's a clear connection or a clear ability to show that COVID was contacted, contracted in one of our classrooms, that workers' comp isn't going to cover their pay, right? You've said that on a couple of occasions publicly, yes?
That's the legal guidance that we're receiving at this time. In any case, even if, I mean, even if technically we get that warning because it was a student, you still can't, if they actually get it, you can't, there's a causal relationship there that's going to be hard to prove.
Understood. So are other government entities treating it the same way? Like, I don't think it's fair to compare us to, you know, a private corporation and how they're paying employees if, if they're quarantined. But are other government entities in our area treating employees in quarantine the same way with regard to pay?
With regard to workers' compensation, I'm not aware of anybody that isn't because it's, again, legal guidance that's coming, coming forward. Where there is variance is if they're allowing temporary duty or if they're allowing so many hours in a sick bank or if they're, you know, in other words, there are other, which I cannot comment on because we are training. So that's where you see differences in, you know, we've contacted, I don't know, up to 40 of the school districts to find out what everybody is doing. And that's where we're seeing the variance, is either they're doing absolutely nothing and the employees are on their own. Up to the best I've seen is where they've, you know, one of two things. They've given everyone, you know, a set number of temporary duty time. I call it adding sick time. And then another one that I've seen a few is where they have a new COVID-specific sick leave bank that they're allowing people to draw off of. So these are some of the variances I've seen in, in other governmental agencies.
Good, I, I appreciate that. And, and also just sort of to reiterate that, that these are issues being worked on between the administration and the union. As you guys go to the bargaining table, you'll have those answers clearly when that process is done.
Yes, our goal is to have everything bargained relative to COVID by the end of the week so that we can get that communication out to all of the instructional staff very early next week. Because our goal is to provide them with all of the information that we have so that then they can make the decisions they need to make relative to whether they need to, you know, if they're going to request an ABA accommodation, if they're going to request, you know, family medical leave, whatever that may be. And then the process will also be outlined as to how are decisions going to be at, at each school site relative to who gets to go to leave home connect and then who gets to go to leave virtual school. So, because we're, as you can imagine, we're on a very tight timeline and I want to provide employees all the time that I can to get any medical documentation that they might need to get for whatever their choice might be.
Thank you. And Dr. Atkins, I guess I'll finish by saying that we just don't know. I, I think that the bottom line here is we just got some really good information from the DOH, which raised 15 other questions that we can't necessarily answer because so much is uncertain. So, you know, So, you know, as I sit here, as a parent trying to decide whether to send my four kids back to school, I know that there are some risks associated with that and I know that there are some questions that simply cannot be answered because of the nature of what it is we're dealing with. So as much as we're trying to give you an answer to every question, it's just not humanly possible at this point, I think, is kind of the bottom line I'm taking away from this conversation. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Patrica. Okay, it is now 2:07. So we're going to take two more hands that I see up and then we'll move on. And remember that the Department of Health dashboard and the COVID-19 website are in our PowerPoint, so we can access those. And I'm sure that we can re-contact Angela and Jennifer if we have further questions. We certainly appreciate you taking the time to be with us today and answer these questions for us and for our listening audience. Okay, Ms. Gittens.
Thank you. Just very briefly, we continue to hear, and I understand it's like a moving target, but many of the things, if not everything, that the district is doing to prepare for the opening of school has to do, is based on the parents' choices that they make. Then asked several questions by parents. If things change, we're looking at August 31st, and should things change drastically one way or the other, parents want to know whether or not they can change that choice, which I know is going to cause another ripple effect. Some of the ones that took it before, first came out, had decided one thing and they listen and they hear and they get up, you know, the different websites for the district and they want to change their mind. So staff, can you please let us know publicly what the issue would be if parents were to change their mind on their choice?
Excuse me, may I interrupt at this time and just say that while we have our Department of Health representatives here, let's keep our topic to the, I'm sorry, keep our questions and comments to the topic of health and safety and the other issues we can bring up a little bit later on in this meeting, hopefully. Okay, so that would be probably a staff question, Ms. Gittens.
Yes, I was just following up on something that Ms. Patrica had mentioned.
Thank you very much.
I'll wait.
Okay, and then, so I see no other hands. So at this time, we, we will, Ms. Jevon Allen, did you take your hand down? Okay. Okay, again, thank you, ladies. We appreciate you. And then we will be moving on at 2:10 PM to our agenda review. Thank you all very much.
Yes, thank you all. Greatly appreciate it.
Okay, so next on our agenda is the agenda review for the July 28th, 2020 regular meeting. At this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Atkins and his staff. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. First question that we have is for Academic Services, E4, Approval of Affiliation Agreement with the University of Massachusetts Amherst School of Psychology Program. And the question is, is this a new agreement? Why is there a fiscal impact? Typically, we do not pay for these types of programs, do we? Question mark. So Amy Clark is going to answer this question for us, I believe. So we'll wait for her to step up to the podium for the mic. There she is.
Yes, good afternoon. This is a new agreement with the University of Massachusetts Amherst. We have three school psychology interns participating in our school psychology internship program each year. And each year, we then sign an agreement with their universities. So this year, we have interns from the University of Massachusetts Amherst, Fordham University, and the University of Central Florida. And we do pay stipend of $20,000 a year for school psychology interns. They provide comprehensive psychological services under the supervision of a school psychologist. They receive two hours a week of direct supervision from our school psychologists. They work full-time.
All right, thank you. And having also answered Approval Agreement with Fordham University.
I'm sorry, Dr. Atkins, I just wanted to ask Ms. Clark about what budget does that come from? That paying for the interns?
Those are three job positions within the psych services budget.
Thank you. And Ms. Gittens?
Yes, mine was how many? I don't know if I overlooked that. It mentions $20,000, but there's three in total?
Yes, there are, there are three interns. Each intern is paid a stipend of $20,000. We have one intern from Fordham University, one intern from the University of Massachusetts Amherst, and one intern from the University of Central Florida.
Do we have any history on whether the interns that we have used before have ended up being, helping us as far as getting jobs in the district?
Yes, last year, we had three interns. We had one who left in the middle of the year, the other two, one from Florida State University, the other from the University of Georgia, have both taken positions with us for this upcoming school as full-time psychologists.
Okay, thank you very much. Good news. Take care.
Thank you, Ms. Clark.
Thank you.
I just would like to add, just so that everyone knows, that since Amy has come on board, she has really been extremely proactive at trying to help with the high turnover that we've had in this position due to, we have not had a competitive salary for what folks can make in other districts and can make in the private sector. And I really just need to compliment her and her tenacity in getting these internships up and running and really putting this in place. Because as you know, in recruitment, we have a very limited staff and she has really just taken this on and has really done a phenomenal job. So I just wanted to highlight that because really, her work on this has resulted in some really positive results.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Atkins?
Okay, the next one, E22, E23, and E24, Approval Agreement and Articulate Acceleration Program for College Instruction for High School Students with Florida Gulf Coast University, and includes one for Benita Springs and also Gateway High School. And question is, do we offer these programs in each of our zones? Acceleration Plan for College Level Instruction for High Schools, which they are considering at Gateway and Benita. And then a follow-up, and how are the student parents made aware of these offerings? So Lori Brooks is going to answer that question for us.
Thank you and good afternoon. The programs at Gateway High School and Benita Springs High School are Zona Tractor Programs, so they are unique to those two high schools. However, the dual enrollment programs and opportunities at Florida Gulf Coast University are available to all high school students across the district. The specific tenants of these two programs are that students have the opportunity, when they choose to apply for Benita Springs High School's program or Gateway High School's program, they can take on high school campus concurrent courses, which are by their high school teachers that are also co-qualified under FGCU's Hiring and Staffing Guidelines as adjunct professors, while they also have a blend on-campus FGCU classes. So that is the unique protocol in these two programs, where the FGCU dual enrollment opportunities are full immersion on college campus programs at FGCU.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I forgot a part B to that question, was how our parents made aware of this, from admitting that. This is part of the school choice process. When students matriculate from grade eight to nine and they're choosing schools, all other programs in the district at different high schools, they're communicated through the same communication channels. That is, on our district website, the school websites, and through the school choice selection process and information sharing for all parents and students.
Okay.
Any other questions, board members? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Brooks.
All right. Next question is E26, Approval Memorandum Agreement with Family Initiative Incorporated. The question is, how will schools, teachers, parents be made aware of these services? Teresa Bowen, our Director of VSE, is going to answer that question for us.
Hi, good afternoon. We have been working with Family Initiative for the last few years in a collaborative effort. And, okay. And it, this memorandum of understanding actually just that as well as an additional service provider, provision through Family Initiative. The, we are working with them currently and we will be meeting with them the week of August 3rd to develop procedures and processes for these referrals. And that information will be relayed to all of our schools and staff that work with students with autism, once we have those procedures in place.
Thank you.
All right, if there aren't any other questions, I'll move on to the next one. The next one is E27, Approval Title I Private School First Amendment One-on-One Learning Court. The question is, could you please explain who is providing the tutoring to the private school student? And is this service available to our children? I'm not familiar with this one. This is Oscar Ogwens, our Assistant Director, Title I and Migrant Programs, will answer that for us. And there he is.
Good afternoon. In regards to the one-on-one private school company, it is Miami-based, but it does hire our private school teacher and our public school teachers with, because that contain a professional education certificate. So that's who they hire, if that's the specific question. How long? Since FY14? So in 2014, we've continued this practice with this company. They're either our teachers that are within our school district or the private school teachers that provide the tutoring service. The second part of the question is, is it available to our public school children? This part of this contract only addresses the private school schools for that year so that we can continue throughout the summer when, after March, due to the COVID-19. So I'm assuming that that was the second part of the question. If not, then I could continue and explain a bit more.
Yes. Mr. Ogwens, we have Gwyneth and Gittens with a question.
Hey, Ms. Fisher, my question was about another item. It's not exactly what he's talking about here, but it's on E, so if you can come back to me, I appreciate that.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Jordan?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was just a little bit confused when I was reading this because I had, you know, I know there's a lot of different entities out there that want to help with the tutoring, depending upon the area that you're in. So that's why when I seen this and it was relating to private school students, I was trying to wrap my head around that portion of it because we're not private schools, we're public school. So that's why I was confused with, you know, the wording of private school and who was eligible to receive these services. So that was my question, so thank you. So why, why is it on here? I mean, again, what, why is it private schools?
Why private schools? Well, since the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, the FCA authorizes the Elementary and Secondary Act of 2015 that was taken over from, or reauthorized from No Child Left Behind, asks for Title I to ensure that a set aside equitable amount be reserved for our private school children that would have, that qualify or that qualify or, and are eligible based off of their low incomes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ogwens.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you.
I think Ms. Gittens had another one with E, so before moving on to F, I just thought we'd get her question.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens, please proceed.
Yes, thank you, Superintendent. This is about E9, and I don't know if I got confused with it, but approval of the English Literacy and Civics Education Grant. Questions with that one. Have we considered adding any, the curriculum about African-American studies? And I, I know I've talked with Jared about it and they were working on it. If this is not one of the areas that this could go into? And also, the grant and the money to fund it, since this was something that was passed, you know, that we'd have to do, why would we need a grant to do it if the legislature is saying we must do it? Is it an unfunded mandate? Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. I can speak to that. The grant you're referring to is for adult education. It's not a K-12 grant. This is an annual grant that we apply for. And this is for our adult English language learners. So they're in civics education and also their adult literacy.
Okay, have we, we're adding anything to that civics piece? If it's appropriate or would we add it for adults if we're going to?
Well, this is focused on English language learners acquiring the English language from other countries. You know, we have a, it's a comprehensive curriculum related to civics from the American perspective, but we haven't, we'd have to look specifically at those standards. But this is for, again, this is not K-12, it's for adult education.
Yeah, and I understand that. I thank you for your answer, just for the, there are a lot of adults as well that are unfamiliar with American history that does include African-American history as well. But thank you so much for your answer. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Dr. Atkins, I just wanted to jump in right for one minute while, I think Ms. Brooks might be still in the room. I wanted to say thank you for the Mental Health Assurance Allocation Plan, which was quite inclusive and comprehensive and developed a lot of partnerships with our community agencies. And I wanted to ask a question about the crisis response team. And have there been any efforts to more closely monitor that? Because I know in, in the past year and the year before, there were some issues about some of the transports that were made by that team. So I just wanted to be sure that we had a handle on that at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. We meet quarterly at a minimum with Center for Progress. And they are the agency, as you know, that has the mobile crisis response team in Circuit 20. They've been in existence now for an entire school year and that would be the renewal into year two now, our agreement with them. We do receive metrics from them on how many calls they make to our schools and are they successful in de-escalation strategies and connection to services? Or do we have an involuntary hospitalization that results under the Baker Act? So we do have metrics there. Statistically speaking, they are more successful in de-escalating with voluntary hospitalization as a last resort measure. And so our escalations through that agency are much higher than a Baker Act. And so our escalations through that agency are much higher than a Baker Act.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay. Dr. Atkins, I think we're ready to move on.
All right, next set of questions. We'll start with F, consent. Business services are privileged expenditure for employee fingerprint retention and resubmission for background screening. Question is, we may have an unexpected open position per Dr. Pruitt, and an extra week before opening a schools could be instrumental in filling those positions. I understand that all things Florida government are running very slowly right now. Can we rely on a quick turnaround on background checks to facilitate last-minute hires? So Dr. Pruitt is going to answer this question for us.
Well, we anticipate no delays. Everything is running, you know, we're at twelve to forty-eight hours right now. And we don't, I saw this question, we inquired and there doesn't anticipate to be any holdup.
Okay.
Thank you.
So next one, we're going down to G-two, approval of the personnel recommendations in general. The first one, I believe, is one that Dr. Pruitt's going to follow up on regarding some teachers at North Fort Myers Middle Academy. So she's going to follow up with that, that question. The next question is, there are three assistant principals on special assignment positions listed in HR administrative assignments. Are these new positions? Please explain the rationale in general for special assignment for teachers, APs and principals, and specifically for these positions. If someone is needed to fulfill certain duties, why not move the person directly into the position of a coordinator, assistant director, et cetera? Question mark. And then are the special assignment people listed in their respective departments? To Dr. Pruitt.
Yeah, so it's a kind of a multi-part answer in that this is the time of year where some things are kind of in flux. And the reason we don't put them in that position immediately is because even the budget line is not available yet and/or the job description is not available yet. But yet the people have been reappointed. And so in order to make sure they don't have a break in service, we put them in this AP on sort of special assignment until we can get everything in line to catch up. So specifically, I can go through the three individuals if that would be requested. In terms of one, none of them are totally new positions. The one position is kind of a revision and a realignment of resources and operations. Another one is, again, revision and moving things around in the grants department. And then the third one is replacing a position where the person got promoted to a principal position. I don't know if there's any additional questions or?
Okay, I have a question, Dr. Pruitt, from Mrs. Jibinelli.
I just, I just have one question. How many principals on assignment do we have at the moment? Like, how many, what's our total? That's all, total.
Thanks for the question.
Um, I don't, other, I'm not sure where we end. Position, I don't know how Mr. Mangans is classified, but that would be the only one.
Thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, thanks. That, that was my question or questions, since there was a lot there. I, frankly, I've never totally understood why we have quite a few. It seems like at any given time, we have quite a few on assignment, special assignment. And, you know, I understand that there's temporary, but it seems like some of the people become a principal on assignment, an AP on assignment. And I noticed there was one that was even a teacher on assignment and they seem to keep that title. Wouldn't it be, for instance, Mr. Mangan, is he still a principal on assignment? He's?
That's, I'm not sure. I'll have to check to see where we ended up with that. But I, the ones for this particular time, it's, again, because the position is there, but you know, it doesn't, it's not official till September first. It's that, where do we put the person until we can actually have that position? And name that position specifically to the job description, the budget line. So there is this period where we're kind of in waiting while we get everything lined up. It just, it never works out perfectly. It seems each year we do positions that we're playing catch-up.
So would, maybe after September first or typically after a particular date, would people who are on special assignments then go into a coordinator position or whatever is the appropriate position? I, and are these people, you know, when we look at a particular department, would these people, you know, it'll list the coordinator and the various assigned jobs? Will, I've never noticed, I've never looked. Will the on special assignment also appear in the list of people? And in our organizational charts? I don't know that I've seen special assignment on any of the organizational charts. Are they? Did I just miss that?
One position is, is assistant principal on special assignment in academic services. That's the position that deals all the, the parental concerns. And because that really is an assistant principal position where we're kind of grooming you to become a principal, that is why it's kept that way rather than as a coordinator. So that one is going to stay that way, administrator on assignment. The other two, particular to this three, you will see their names come through again and it will be with a different job description. And I believe in both cases, it will be coordinating.
Okay. And as I said, just in general, I've always kind of questioned why we have so many on special assignment. And it makes sense, what you're saying, if there are people that are going to move into coordinator positions, assistant directors or, or whatever. But when, when I see somebody that's had a principal on assignment, let's say designation, and Mr. Mangan's name just comes to, just because he's the only one I can think of at this point, it, it just is, I don't know, it almost seems like it's a more of a placeholder than an actual specific set of duties.
And sometimes it is. It just, you know, there's unique situations. There are some times when we do need to pull administrators out of a building. And so, but they have contractual rights to that position. And so, and, and they, they have that right until the end of that contract year. So that's why he will, that does happen, but that's not the only reason we do that.
Okay.
I think of a good example would be Dave LaRosa. He started out as a principal on assignment because we weren't sure if, did we want this to be a permanent position? And we just weren't sure. But then, once we determined that, then that next year, we moved into that being a position, you know, on the org chart. So it does just really depend, you know, on the particular situation.
Okay. Well, yeah, thank, thank you for the answer. Thank you, Ms. Vaughn, Dr. Pruitt. Okay, Dr. Atkins?
Okay, the next question is G-five, approval of the master in-service plan for 2020, 2021. The question is, what changes additions have been made for the active shooter training? Dr. Savage?
I thank you. Just a few things, when we talk about active shooters, a number of things that are included in this. You know, the first is just, the first level is our web-based active shooter training, which is done virtually through the Safe Schools platform. That's every employee, every year. You know, that training varies slightly for administrators and teachers since leaders have more of kind of administrative role and their training reflects that. Additionally, there's an active shooter plan and hostage situation plan, which are both in the teacher's safety handbook. All teachers receive this via their school administration. Mr. Parfitt distributes this to principals on an annual basis and also includes it in our district's safety portal, which, you know, everyone moves from these learn pages to our web-based portals now. So that's a little different. It's your, your access credentials. It's a little different than in years past, but allows you to access those tools in a secure way. And all of our district employees have access through that secondary way as well. Also, at the school level, we have SROs. They offer the active shooter individually at their individual school sites. They can do entire faculties, grade-level teams, other small groups, the safety team, the threat assessment team. They have that ability to deliver that at their individual school sites. Additionally, we have an Alice grant. Now, this was actually a City of Cape Coral phenomenal grant. Alice training, some of the top-of-the-line training related to this area because it's developmentally appropriate. So this really helps people understand how to do something like this with kindergarteners all the way up through adults. So that's pretty important and it's the Alice grant. Now, while that was the City of Cape Coral had that grant, fortunately, the partnerships are so strong that they're, we're offering this to the entire district via that grant. So it's being scaled up in a train-the-trainer model. It's a two-day training. It's the best that's out there in terms of this piece is Alice training. And then last but not least, you know, a big adjustment to our master in-service this year was our I love you guys standard response protocol and then also the reunification plan with reunification training that goes. Now, the standard response protocol is powerful because it takes that incident command structure and really applies like an all-hazard approach. So a lot of the training is transferable, not just for a shooting event, but for a lot of different emergencies. And so it helps increase a common language on the feedback around the I love you guys. It was done in kind of a pilot basis, I want to say, the last couple of years, where people could attend those trainings optional. And the feedback was so powerful that we additionally wrote a grant and set aside some funds to get materials for everyone and these reunification kits. So there's a lot that happened. To get more into detail, because I know this, this was just one subset of an agenda item on a much larger scale. Mr. Parfitt, of course, is presenting, and feel free to ask him a question about any of these things tomorrow as well with when we do the SROs, list his law guardian and so forth as well, because this is all in there. So that's, that's the quick version.
Okay.
I'll let you get active shooter training with our guest speakers as requested. And we will continue to offer that to our guest speakers.
Thank you. That's important. But we'll talk about that another time. I have Ms., Mrs. Patrica, I'm just going to take you now because I know that you have a hard stop at some point. And, and then I have four other hands up. So please go ahead, Ms. Patrica.
Thank you. I think I may have asked the wrong question. I'm really sorry. I, I wasn't, I don't think I was as concerned about active shooter as I was. I think we've received some recommendations lately to sort of beef up our training before a shooting event took place. I think that's more what I was getting at. And are there additional trainings that are either being considered or have been implemented for this school year?
Well, one that happens annually is the assessor training. The assessor training, so one of the things you're describing is a weapons possession. So when a, like a student has a weapon on, on a campus, that's really important for administrators to know what to do when a weapon is there. And that is, you know, assessor offenses are not new. That's something that's existed for quite a while from an administrative standpoint. But if people aren't handling those kinds of things on an ongoing basis, you know, that, that, that's why we do it on an annual basis. Our assessor training was recently revised. It's actually something Student Services does. They just actually, I think it was last week, possibly this week, and it's really right around this time. Student Services, if they're in there with Dr. Spire, they may be able to comment. The other thing we could do is ask them to, you know, present something along, if, if this is a particular topic of interest, sure, Student Service would be happy to talk about the assessor training, you know, as well.
And I think along that line, Dr. Savage, is the restorative practices and positive behavior support, which are more preventive in nature?
Those are also Student Services elements as well. Dr. Pruitt, looks like you want to weigh in here?
Yes.
Just wanted to comment specifically to what Ms. Patrica is getting at. We added the new piece of that training to be very specific, which we just covered in our AP Academy that just occurred. And we had very specific training about any situations that are prior to an active shooter training. And then we will also be reviewing those, that information, that training in our nuts and bolts meeting where administrators come back. So it'll be a reminder for the assistant principals and then just reiterating it to the principals, specific to what you're asking.
And then I guess my last question surrounding that is, what about students? Are students prepared for that kind of a situation too? Do we have that kind of training for students? Or does the, the training that Dr. Savage mentioned cover that for students?
I can't speak to the specific piece and how it's going to be incorporated. I'm not sure if Dr. Savage can or maybe Dr. Spire.
Yeah. With our Student Services, again, I, I would say it would be probably best if we all had a chance to do that together rather than any one of us speaking for the others. Like, Dr. Pruitt was just summarizing, that's the training I had heard about last week that was happening with the assessor that I saw the, kind of the breakouts of what was happening in their AP training. So that's definitely something I'm sure the Student Services team would like to talk about in, in school development, how they work with their kids at the varying different levels and so forth.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, I have a few more questions here. I'm not sure who they are for. First is Ms. Jordan, followed by Ms. Vaughn.
Okay, thank you. I just want to say, I know I attended last year, I think, Ms. Fisher, Ms. Morgan, a couple of us attended the I love you guys training, and that was fabulous. I got so much out of that and I, I think that's a really great tool. But what I wanted to do, I know this is not on this topic, the rest, it looks like the rest of the questions were questions that I had, which I have already received the information on that. So Dr. Atkins really doesn't need to, or disturb anybody else with that if, if that's okay with you, because I've already had all the answers given to me by other people prior to the meeting.
Is that information that all of us should have, Ms. Jordan?
I, I'm not sure. It was things that I was concerned about, about the roof, which, management, which I got the answer for that. And then regarding the locks and the SROs, which we just received that information.
Thank you.
So it's up to you all.
I think we're, I think we're good and we'll move right along with Ms. Vaughn's questions.
Yeah, and Ms. was kind of clarifying what she had asked. And I kind of wanted to expand on that because I feel like, did, and this came out because of situations from this prior year. I remember when there were speakers that were coming up to the microphone, speaking on behalf of an employee. I was very, very concerned, let's say, because some of those were employees of our district. Some of them were office employees, maybe. You know, it's all well and good that we're going over some of these things for the non-active shooter, the weapons. It's all well and good that we're doing that. But really, every single person in, in the school, from the bus drivers through the teachers, everybody has to have a really, really clear idea, or not idea, knowledge of what do I do if I think one of my students has a weapon? Our students need to know, what do I do? Apparently, in some situations of, of the past, there were students that actually saw a weapon and didn't report it. Or there were students that saw a weapon and might have been afraid or had difficulty in reporting it to the right people and then having that. So, you know, we're, we have some pretty clear ideas on the active shooter, but I'm very concerned that we don't have clear protocols from bus drivers, through teachers, through administrators, plus all of our students on what to do. And I'm just wondering what's going to, first of all, what's going to change this year? And secondly, I know there are task forces in, on each campus that deal with the safety. And the other thing I'm, I'm wondering is are any of those from prior years, are any of the minutes of the meetings that I think they're required to meet monthly? I'm, I'm not sure. I thought it was monthly. Do we have minutes of that? Who is monitoring that in all of our schools? This is actually taking place. It's huge concern this past year.
Let me start by answering the, the question in terms of what's changing moving forward this year relative to, you know, teachers, support staff. You know, I, as a result of the situation we went, went through at Harms Marsh Middle School, I directed staff to, to, you know, reexamine the training that we do provide. You've got training that occurs through Mr. Parfitt with assistant principals. You heard Dr. Pruitt refer to the nuts and bolts. And there's also training and from that, the nuts and bolts, that district meeting where we train administrators, then you have to have the training that occurs at the school site by those administrators so that they take that and they train their staff. So what, what changes this year is we have, we're going to have a system for assuring that that training does take place. The school resource officer, for example, along with the school administrative team, the principal is responsible for making sure that, that our teachers understand what their role and responsibility is. As with our support staff, what they should be doing anytime you have like what we saw at, at Harms Marsh where you had a, a weapon reported. So that will be cleared and then it will be accountability in terms of, of people that have to, you have to sign off whenever you've received training that you had to take, that you did take that training. You, and, and we have a written record that that has occurred. I think the other question related to the safety committees that are required to meet and, and the minutes. That requirement is something that would be monitored again through the safety and security team. When they go out to the schools and they conduct those inspections. And again, I don't know if Mr. Parfitt is available to speak to that, but that's how, that's how that accountability is taken.
Cause I know, Dr. Atkins, you and I at one point had a discussion about that. And we were talking about, well, how do you prove? And I, I actually at that time, I remember saying, well, you just sign off on it as, as a professional the same way that you sign off when you are administering, for instance, an FSA test. You, when, there's an accountability there when you sign off, which I did many times when I was teaching, that says basically, you, you know, you do something that makes it seem like you're helping the kids to cheat or you're helping them in certain ways, lose your teaching license. And, and so I'm really, really pleased that we've shored up a, a lot of this. Because, you know, you hate to, sometimes it happens that way, that you learn from a very unfortunate situation and, and it appears that we are. But I, I just want to make sure that we have the accountability that somebody's checking up on minutes or attendance at, at these various committee meetings. Because, you know, you start the school year, especially a school year like this one, with this one starting. And then by the time you get to, let's say, April, maybe some people are a little rusty on things or not quite remembering. So, yeah, I'm really, I think we're sharing this up and, and I hope that we have continued accountability at all of the schools.
Yes. If, if I may, just want to add one other thing. You know, there's, there's accountability. And then there's also creating a culture that embraces safety. And I think, you know, having been a principal and worked at all levels and seen what it's like in various schools all across our district. And I will tell you that while we want a certain level of, of base compliance across every school, some schools take and embrace that culture and it becomes pervasive where students report. Because they, they really take ownership and agency in it. And families know that if they have safety issues, that they're being addressed on an ongoing basis. And so, you know, you can have plans and you can have policies and procedures. But it's only once people really take them and live them and it, and it really becomes a part of the way you do business and your culture and your footprint, that it, it really takes on the life that we wanted to see. So one of the things we did throughout this year is we took all the, all the different requirements of Marjorie Stoneman Douglas, the two commission reports, as well as all of the, the piece, the grand jury recommendations, as well as all of the critical things that should have been done. Example of which would be the zero tolerance on weapons possession, which you mentioned earlier. And put those into a rubric, a performance rubric that essentially described schools at the minimum level of compliance, where they're checking the letter of the laws, you said, signing off so that I don't lose my certificate, up to all the way, the highest level of what does it look like if people are truly living and breathing and taking ownership and letting it be the culture all the way through and to describe that so that a person who wants it knows what that looks like. And we built those rubrics out, took months to, to do all that and map that out. But then we, we created corresponding training for each of those particular subsets of an area. Because you might have a school that is incredible relative to their fire drills, but they really didn't understand what the Cessar acronym was, you know, or they knew there was a board policy, but they weren't a hundred percent sure what to do. And so, you know, there's so many different things that, that one could focus on. And obviously the, you know, the, from a safety standpoint, you start with the most risk and you work your way down. But the, but the bottom line of it is all of it, we want to improve. So it's not just a matter of having compliance and measuring in-service records. It's also a matter of helping people choose to take ownership. So it isn't just a safety group that meets and documents their notes. It's a safety group that is routinely meeting because they want to meet, because they're listening to what their, their faculty is saying. They're working with their children. They're listening to their parents. They're, they're able to identify site-specific issues that identify. Threat assessment teams are very particular to the specific threats that are emerging security-wise on their campus. That is a culture shift. It doesn't happen overnight, but that is something that we're deeply committed to. In fact, Dr. Pruitt mentioned one of the staff that was recently taking a position that had been vacant in our security group. We lost an employee, but we gained an employee. And one of the benefits of that safety move was we're actually bringing a person into the safety department that has school leadership experience. So now you have someone who actually has been administrator, who's done administrative searches, who's run the safety drills, who's taught entire faculty, who's, you know, worked with those individual students in a way that our safety department simply couldn't have. Because they have a, a wide bevy of emergency management and law enforcement and stuff. So I just want to give you that because it's just another way that we're committed to trying to, to connect to our customers and make this district safer in a transparent way.
Thank you very much, Dr. Savage. That's valuable information. I have two more hands up. I have Mrs. Jiminelli, followed by Mrs. Gittens.
Thank you. Thank you. So actually you've answered most of my questions and actually, and Ms. Patrica clarified, that's what I was going to do is clarify her question. So basically I'm just going to twist this a little bit. So all these new things in place are new since December 20th. That's my understanding, like the revised AP Academy. That's all some, some new training and so forth that's been put in place. Is that my understanding? That all this stuff that we've just talked about? Thank you. That's, that was what I wanted to do. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens, please.
Yes, thank you. If I may, I have a question. I'm not sure where it would go, so I'll bring it up now. It has to do with G1 that was talking about the summer school appointments for, for staff. And it brought a question to my mind that since we are starting school later and the teachers are assigned, and to my understanding, the students that are assigned to these summer school programs were because of their academic need. Is there, has there been any discussion of possibility of extending the time for those students? I'm sure they could use in preparation for the new school year. And I think that's for academic services or superintendent, whichever. Thank you.
I'm just trying to get, if you could hit the first part of that question again, I didn't. I, I think I know what you're getting at, but I, I just, you could reword it maybe.
Okay. All right. Basically, in a nutshell, we've got summer school going on. I believe this is the last week of it for a select number of students. And it was to help those students, of course, that needed that academic help. Since not starting for another month, would it not be beneficial to them as well to extend that program? Because then otherwise we're talking about another month before they get additional academic help again. So, Dr. Spiro, you, I see you there. Does that make sense to you?
It makes, it makes a lot of sense, which is why we do have, our I ready for elementary, middle school has been expanded all the way through August 13th. So parents still have opportunities for enrichment and intervention. And also want to remind everybody, we did put a summer enrichment packet out for all grade levels, all summer, all subjectives as well, with links, resources that's available to our community. We just send that back out to the board, I believe, last weekend, if I'm not mistaken. If not, I'll resend it to everybody. But that is on our school district website. And we're, we're happy to re-push that out to our families if we need to communicate that again.
And if the families do take advantage of that and they have questions in those resources, are there contacts that they can reach as well?
Great question. We have our three directors of curriculum, Dr. Bethany Chris, elementary, Lori Howchen from middle school, and Candace Oliveto for high school. Any parent can reach any of the directors of curriculum and they will steer them in the right direction.
Okay. And while you're there, just a real quick question on that achievement. I've gotten a lot of people that are very confused as to what to do with their choice if they have an ESC or a student, or a student with an IEP. And if it can be offline, then that's fine, but I really didn't want to know.
And I'd like to say publicly, and so our, and I've said this, Facebook Live, we've said this, anytime we've spoken to the public, if parents have specific questions about students, you know, ESP students, they should contact our director, Teresa Bowen. Her and her team really want to work with individual families to help guide them on making the best decision for their family. The same thing for our ELL students. Dr. Rivera and her team are asking that families directly contact them. And they have to work with those families on helping them guide through that process. Because it's, it's hard to get a blanket answer on especially our ESC students, because there might be so many differences, which is why that Teresa and her team really want to work with them.
And it may be appropriate, now Ms. Fisher, for me to ask the other question I had earlier, as to whether parents can change their choice as things continue to evolve and change. And a lot of, some parents have said that their administrators, that's their schools have told us that they can. I would just like publicly to get it out there. Is that something that can be done? And I know it affects a plethora of things and people because we're trying to get those numbers down. But as to who's going to be where, but if you could address that please for the public, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. I'm going to do my part and then I'll let Dr. Atkins fill in anything I may miss on this. So the survey was extended to this Thursday. So this Thursday, families can make a selection. And then at that point on, schools are having, as well as Dr. Pruitt is having to figure out what we're going to be doing with, based around those numbers, what are we going to be doing with our teachers and making sure that we have enough resources for leave virtual school, leave home connect and face-to-face as well. So really that is, the 30th is really our timeframe. Now, if I'm a family and I have extenuating circumstances based around health, based around work, then yes, I work with my child's principal and he or she can work with the principal and they can have that leeway to make decisions with those families. But we really need our families to try to make their decision, their decision by this Thursday. So other decisions can be made within the organization in regard to our workforce. Dr. Atkins?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I mean, it really would be those extenuating and special circumstances. Otherwise, we are asking that people, you know, commit to a decision. So if you're at least school connect, that is something that you're going to stay with until the quarter. If you go with leave virtual school, that would be something that would go with the semester. Same with the, you know, the face-to-face. And, you know, we again, would like them to commit to that. Now, obviously, you know, we will work with our parents on extenuating circumstances at the school level.
Thank you very much, both of you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now we have our operations. I don't know if Dr. Atkins, if you have any questions for that area? And if so, following the agenda review, we have the capital update, the change order memo and memo, and the East Lake Cooperative Letter. So that would give us approximately almost 20 minutes each item and we want to stay right on time. So Dr. Atkins, I'll turn it back to you.
I, I do have some questions for operations, although this is the ones that Debbie Jordan had mentioned were her questions. So just to make, I, I think what we can do is I'll ask, I'll ask Dr. Savage to come on, but to be very brief in his responses. Don't need a lot of explanation, but I'll go through them really quickly. The first one has to do with the re-roofing of Cypress Lake. And there was a question about the management fee and then a follow-up about the teardown of, of Cypress as well as Franklin Park. So that was the first question.
Yes, and I'll do the brief version. So if Scott wants to amplify later, he can. Basically, it just has to do with construction management at-risk contracts, all having some fee essentially built into it. Scott estimated that if, even in contracts where you don't see it, it's, it's still there. And it would be between 20 and 28%. So that was, and that was for the high schools would be actual board item. The second part of the question came for Franklin Park in Cypress middle, specific, the rebuild there. And, and we just have some updates there, which is just, we're submitting final documentation to the DOE on this Friday, the 31st. And Cypress Lake is going to retain one of its buildings due to its age and condition. It can be repurposed, but Franklin Park has also shown the need in it through the Castoli to also retain a minimum of its building 16. However, we're hoping that the submission we've been working on with the DOE this week will allow us to raise the entire site. We're just submitting in a different way than we've typically done as more of a community project. And so not just looking at it as a school-based cost. So ideally, we want to start the procurement process for these projects in January. So that's the update for there.
Okay. Next one again, for Dr. Savage approval to increase expenditures. It's a bid for architectural hardware. Where are all of the other schools not listed to have their locks upgraded done in the past year? And if so, did we not have the budgeted dollars then to do all schools for the referendum locks gray upgrade project?
Yes, another good question. There were only 34 schools, sites that needed the ADA code red lock upgrades. The, the rest of them already had appropriate functionality. They were, was, it did utilize referendum dollars for those 34 sites. As part of the increase, because part of the increase also had a, essentially other funds, the day-to-day funds. So, you know, just the locks piece is, it can be a real challenge because there were, there were material increases. There was more expended in the day-to-day part of that piece than what was expected, as well as certain door configurations and functions were, had a little bit more increased complexity. So in order to secure that, they had to order additional parts and things to get that piece where it is. I just know it's been extremely burdensome for maintenance, but absolutely well worth it because of safety.
The last question, well, no, there's two other questions. And one of them's lumped together, has approval, the agreement with Cape Coral Police Department and the City of Sanibel. The question is, where's Lee County and the Fort Marsh Police Department renewal? Were their contracts still valid? So this is, has to do with the SRO contracts.
All four coming forward. The first two, Cape Coral, Sanibel are here because they're, they're, they're ready to go. Their funds are ready and so forth. The issue we ran into was actually Their funds are ready and so forth. The issue we ran into was actually with City of Fort Myers. They needed to essentially, and I think everyone was impacted by COVID and the revenue shortfalls and the budget relationship to that. Um, but City of Fort Myers in particular, just they told us, you, we have to hold for a minute. Uh, so we understand the full implications of our budget and how it would impact the SROs. So that has kind of a domino impact in the Lee County Sheriff. While because we, we utilize SROs in that regard, the Lee County Sheriff would certainly help us cover any vacancies if somehow City of Fort Myers were unable to be able to come up with that. But they assured us that they do believe they will be able to staff all of their schools. Uh, but that's why those two are bound together because Cape Coral and Sanibel would not be able to cover City of Fort Myers, but Lee County Sheriff would. Uh, so that's why those are slightly delayed. We're still putting them forward in August. They'll be there and you'll get to hear more about it tomorrow and ask any questions you may have, uh, but that's a good preview for tomorrow.
Uh, which, uh, I'll just finish up the questions. There was a question about Mr. Everly not being a part of the safety panel tomorrow. He, uh, he is planning on attending, so he will be there. And that's it, Madam Chair, for our questions.
Thank you very much. I do have one more question, um, hand up, and that is Mrs. Stephenelli. And so I know she's going to make it quick, so let's entertain her now.
Actually, and it can wait, if, since, um, it's just regarding an update on the roof, the Benita roof. We were talking about roofs and I was just curious, and that can, that could fall after Mr. Rickenbacker too. It doesn't matter. I mean, I was just curious.
Okay. Why don't you wait for him then? That'll be great. Thank you. Okay. So moving right along, we are completed our agenda review for tomorrow's meeting. And we'll now have the, um, Capitol Project Update with Scott Rickenbacker.
Good afternoon, board members. Dr. Atkins, this is your July 2020, uh, Capitol Project Updates. Daryl, if you can bring up the presentation. Uh, next page, please. There we go. Perfect. Uh, as you see, this is the third and final phase of Idar Baker High School. Uh, we're getting prepared to connect the PLC building this week. And substantial completion for this final phase of this project will be, uh, nine eleven twenty twenty. So we're just about wrapping everything up and it's been successful. And I believe on your agenda, you're approving the final payment for the previous two phases. And this one's on schedule to be completed. Next slide, please. Riverdale High School, we attained substantial completion of the work we did tie in the auditorium in on July 24th. Right now we're finishing our punch list and cleanup effort out there and that job is scheduled to be completed seven thirty-one twenty twenty, the end of this next week.
Awesome.
Next, we have our two central energy plant projects that are coming up at Cape Elementary. And right now both jobs have a substantial completion date of February 1st, 2021. We are going through the construction, uh, contract review right now in legal and procurement for Cape Coral Elementary. And we have received the GMP are reviewing that and will be coming forward with an amendment to that contract to actually fund the contract value, uh, in the next week or two. So those are on track and we're moving forward. Next slide, please. New construction. This is just a sample of the COVID precautions that we use out at Gateway High School. And I just sent a memo out with very similar standards to all of our, our contract managers that'll be working during the active school year. So they're going to be implementing temperature scanning, a check-in, masks, staying away from staff and students, uh, on all of the other projects. We have a protocol and they'll be following all CDC and school district guidelines. Next slide, please. Uh, currently building A, we're painting in, in the exterior and on the interior through the pictures. What you can see is all the interior sheet rock, ceiling grid, light fixtures and HVAC ductwork is all going and is on place. The substantial completion date for this project is seven three of 2021. We're ahead of schedule, so we, we may decide to take that building a little bit earlier, a couple, two, three months. Um, but the longer it stays under the CM's auspices, uh, the longer they pay for the electric bill. So we'll make a determination to that effect at a later date. Uh, next slide, please. This is building B and C, uh, building C right now, again, we're doing the lights, the duck work. We're doing all the interior, uh, grid work. And in building C, we just finished directing and Dr. Atkins was able to see this, the catwalk, the theatrical catwalk, which is a pretty big accomplishment when you look at it. It gets sprayed black, so at the end of the day, you'll never notice it, but it's a lot of work up there and it came out really well. Next slide, please. Central Energy Plant, uh, everything's getting ready to be powered up. In September, we'll be throwing our, what we call our main distribution electrical gear onboard, as well as our chillers to blow air conditioning, which for the next Lee Pitt slide, maybe you'll feel a little bit more comfortable in that space coming up. Uh, gotta give these guys credit with the masks and the helmets and the vests. And no real air moving, it gets hot in there and these guys do it for eight hours. So my hat's off to their, the workers. Next slide, please. MM High School's roundabout, if you haven't been over on Griffin Drive, it was opened up on July 19th. So far functioning the way it should be functioning. Uh, we're preparing to light up our streetlights and poles along that segment, which ultimately be turned over to Gateway Services. So if you haven't seen our little roundabout there, take a trip over. Next slide, please. MM Middle School, just a little while ago, I think I sent you guys an update that we started the pre-cast panel erection on the 18th. Well, it's all done. All the pre-cast panels are up. Right now we're in our structural steel phase. Uh, we were going to have two crews out there, but one of the crews on a separate project had come down with the COVID. So we're down to one crew and they've already beginning locking all the panels in with structural steel. What that does is then, once the structural steel is in place and the metal decking, we can then start taking away the safety braces and then we're set should a hurricane event ever come through. So we're working towards that and the substantial completion on that is seven fifteen twenty twenty-one as well. Um, we're going to probably ahead of schedule on that one as well, but, uh, we're on track and on schedule for the projects. Next slide, please. Gateway High School Portables, the principal is in, she's bringing her staff in, her front office is set up and, uh, we're putting the final little colored banners and directional signage up and we're ready for a start of school season. Next slide, please. Our last and final phase of canopies to portables throughout the district where they've been deployed, uh, is completed. We're doing our final punch list, but all the canopy work is done and that completes any portables that have been distributed around the district. Next slide, please. James Stevens, uh, this is the pre-K, uh, project. It's underway. We're, we've begun. Demolition is occurring and we're on schedule to have that open for a substantial completion of December 2020. Next slide, please. Kitchen renovations. All the kitchens are underway. Bay Shore is final cleaning, but it's opened up and completed. Gulf PLC is 95% complete, uh, with some of the work we had to do there. We are, uh, substantially complete by contract on July 31st, which is the end of this week. And we, we should attain that with no problem. Next slide, please. J. Colen English is completed, final cleaning. Mirror Lakes is completed, final cleaning. Tree line, we did our interior work, however, due to a COVID, the manufacturer is late. The box would have shipped and been completed by July 31st. The box now will ship on July 31st. So obviously with school, obviously with school being pushed back, that helps this situation. However, we do have a plan B regardless, which is the contractor will be responsible for a freezer cooler truck to park in the back. And we've done similar, uh, like at Tropic Isles where we had to replace a cooler mid-year, we bring a freezer cooler truck in. But we really believe it will ship. I'll confirm that to all of you as we get closer to Friday. If not, we have a plan B to support that kitchen. Next slide, please. Fort Myers Middle, 90, 90% complete. We're just doing some final fencing, exterior dining areas. We actually, uh, the principal had made a last minute request for some additional gates for security purposes. So we signed that, uh, contingency adjustment and that is moving forward. And again, that'll all be completed by this Friday as well. And Diplomat Kitchen, uh, 95% complete and that also will be completed by this Friday. Just doing finishing touches out there. Next slide, please. IT Tower removals. Uh, these were all the towers that were funded by the IT, the old communication towers that were a hazard to our facilities. We are able to take down all of the towers. There were five projects. The only one we could not get is Orangewood Elementary. Uh, that requires an FAA permit, so we went in there and we disconnected all the existing electrical connections to it and that'll be taken down over winter break. Next slide, please. And you can see Hancock Creek and Gateways as well. Next slide, please. Roofing project, Cypress Lake High School, obviously you're voting for the increase to the total project cost. And that's coming to you on, uh, July 28th. Lee County Public Education Center, total product cost estimate, that is also coming to you on July 28th for approval. And Norfolk Myers High School, the NTP was issued, the substantial completion for that roofing project will be March 8th of 2021. And on Norfolk Myers, our GMP actually came in, um, $850,000 underneath our total product cost. So that's money that'll come back to the district. Next slide, please. Traffic improvements. All of our traffic improvements are ongoing. Uh, they're finishing up, they're paving, they're striping, they're putting the bumpers in. Uh, we had to do some slight modification out of tree line, the existing drainage that was approved, which wasn't part of this project, was backing up and we had some flooding last week in the parking lot. So the team is out there now. We made some adjustments. Our civil engineers provided us with a, a direction and a program and that's being done this week and will be completed prior to the end of the week. Uh, that's Diplomat, Tree Line, River Hall. And that is our, and Three Oaks. Project for traffic improvement. So those are completed. And that completes the construction update. Are there any questions before I move on to the change order report?
Hey, um, Mr. Rickenbacker, I have three questions. We'll begin with Mrs. Morgan.
Uh, this is just a question for the board. There are a lot of projects. I'm wondering if there's a way we can do a dashboard or a timeline, uh, that shows different projects by category, renovation, construction, maintenance, what's sales tax, what's not sales tax? What's on top, what's on, on time, what's delayed? Where are we, uh, where are we with respect to funding? Are we over, under? Um, because then I think we could ask better questions. Um, you know, it's nice to have these photographs and sort of a, uh, an anecdotal update, but I think from a supervisory point of view, it would be better for the board if we could see some of this stuff laid out in a way that we were in a position to identify areas that we thought were critical that we wanted to ask questions about. So that's just a comment, um, for the board. I assume that you do that, Scott, as part of your, you know, that's how you manage your work. So I guess what I'm asking is for a sort of a, uh, 30,000 square foot cut of your, um, dashboard or your operational flow chart or whatever it is. But I'll let the other board members say whether or not that's something they're interested in. And that's my comment. Thank you.
We're getting ready to do that. Prior to COVID hitting, uh, Judy, uh, was helping us as well as Laura Howard to set up a website. So when you go to the district, lee schools.net, you go to department. You can physically come to the construction division and see active projects with current photos updated monthly with a brief description. Um, we were, we were getting there, we were starting to set it up and then COVID hit. So as we start to get back into the swing of things, that is our intention to, uh, provide photos and a monthly update and project statuses for the general public and anyone, actually.
Awesome. Thank you. Mrs. Morgan, any more comments? Okay. Thank you. Um, Ms. Jordan.
Thank you. Uh, and Ms. Morgan, I think that's a great idea. The question that I had is regarding, um, the construction of MM. And I know that, um, back in June, I had sent, um, Ms. Ebock, uh, a question regarding that because my impression it was that it was going to be a new, a new construction and it was going to be, we're going to come do the same process that we did with the, um, high school. But then it appears now that that is going to be taking place of Lambs. Will be moving over there from my understanding now. And have we gone out to the community and spoke to them about this?
I, I can tell you that's a recent turn of events that has been discussed. I know it's been looked at by curriculum and staff. And I'll pass it to Tom, Mr. Savage. I do believe they're getting ready, the whole community events to talk about that whole scenario and how that takes place. So, Mr. Savage?
Yes, uh, Debbie, great question. Uh, and this again is just an opportunity of how the divisions kind of all work across divisionally. Uh, while this is, you know, building a new school is certainly an operations thing in terms of trying to understand the community and be strategic in terms of a school identity standpoint and helping schools, uh, to, to try to thrive. Uh, that is, you know, one of the, the groups that really works with us on that is our academic services and, and specifically school development and the synergies that we create by sharing ideas. Uh, and so one of our school development executives, after joining our team, uh, here at the district, uh, one of the supervisors of all the principals at that level had a really, uh, awesome idea and then continued to work with staff around that. And then the third group that really gets brought into this is communications. The idea of how do we not just communicate, but how do we engage with the community? How do we tell that story? How do we, how do we listen? How do we, uh, engage? And that's, uh, where a new, one of our, our new hires, uh, Mr. Malloy, who joined us, uh, is an instrumental part of this. So it's a cross-divisional organizational approach to it, that, uh, there are some critical different hats that folks wear in it. Um, you know, it's, it's, it's a pretty big topic, so it's probably not the best venue to go into more detail at this time. But certainly we'll be providing more information. You'll see, uh, when the CIP is coming out, uh, that's, that's due to, I've seen the, the drafts of it. It's pretty impressive to look at and it will be putting it in front of the board in, in August for, uh, publishing here. So I think you'll be pretty impressed. That goes into some detail, uh, but it's going to be an ongoing, um, piece of work. So yes, it's true though, to confirm what you were saying, which is that, uh, MM, uh, in an effort to try to open the school at full capacity. So rather than having to try to draw people in and wait for people to leave other schools or people to move to the community and add them into the under-selected school, uh, the strategic thought was to actually allow Lambs, who's been one of our older campuses out in Lehigh, uh, be able to go into a brand new building, preserve their intact student and faculty, uh, really help that, that school, uh, you know, get a fresh face. And, uh, then that, that leftover building, the old Lambs campus, um, that would be assimilated into Veterans Park in a strategic capacity based on the growing, uh, capacity needs. So rather than having to open up, you know, you get to open up one school at full capacity, maximally using that, that new building and allow that current principal to really, uh, speak to that design. And then the second part is, um, bringing that Lambs, Old Lambs campus up to a date and, and merging it into, uh, the Veterans Park campus in a strategic way. And there will be a lot more information on that. I'm not doing any justice because it's just too much to go into right now. But, um, definitely big, big, big things happening and there'll be a lot more information to come on that.
Yeah, and thank you. And I just, I just believe that that's something that we really need to have a conversation on because when I read it, I thought I was losing my mind. And so I, I had to send this because that was not the impression that I had, uh, thought it was to be. And then thinking of Veterans Park, um, consolidating the two of them, to me that just became such, that school became so much larger, uh, almost, um, like another Lehigh senior. I mean, that amount of children. So I just think that, and I think in the beginning when we had the two schools, it was, uh, the community did feel that it was two new schools with bringing in different, uh, students, um, and then building up. So I think we need to make sure that, um, we do have that conversation and it is, um, it, it's out there. So thank you, and I look forward to hearing more about it.
Absolutely.
We did do is, uh, we did have, started having that conversation with our Eastlake County Cooperative Group. So we, uh, we talked to them about, about this and something I do want to mention that we, that we would like to do as a part of that project, that Veterans Park is an art school, K-8. And, um, you know, it does not have any type of auditorium attached to it. And that is something that has been a request of the community for a, a number of years. Because if you think about Norfolk Myers Academy, the arts, uh, they have a, a, a wonderful auditorium as a part of that building. Uh, so that, that school serves the, uh, the west zone and it feeds into, you have a high school there, Norfolk Myers Academy, which is an art school. This gives us an opportunity to go into the east zone and, um, and really add that auditorium in between those two facilities. Cause if you, you know, you've been there, you, you know that they're fairly close together. And then give us an opportunity to really, and I'm just going to be candid, that old, that old building is very, very difficult to, to really make attractive for, for that community. Um, you know, I lived in that when I was at golf and, uh, uh, it, it is difficult to compete if you're the principal at Lambs when you've got a pretty new varsity lakes and then you've got that beautiful campus at, at Veterans Park. And then you've got this brand new, you know, what would have been a brand new middle school. what would have been a brand-new middle school going in, and here you are with this old, tired, old facility trying to attract students and staff into that school, so we, we felt there would be an opportunity for us to make some important renovations to that building while also providing an opportunity to add an auditorium, or at least a black box theater to that art school for the sake of equity, so yeah, much more on that, but, but that's, you know, kind of what's behind the, the concept there.
All right, thank you. Great, thank you very much, okay, let's see, I have three more hands up, and we'll begin with Ms., Mrs. Gittens.
Sorry, thank you, I finally gave the dog his last medication so I can come on now, thank you for that. A couple of questions, one, and then I'll ask, which are kind of linked together, Mr. Rick and Barker talked about IT towers that would improve, and I'm just wondering, with the improvement of the IT towers, I'm not even sure where they are, is that to help the connectivity in certain areas like in east zone where there are so many difficulties with hotspots and our students being able to get on digitally, so if he's still there or if, if.
The status of these towers were a safety hazard, they were decommissioned, some of them were falling apart, some of our concrete structures where the concrete had chipped away at the base and the rebar was showing, so they're in danger and in peril, so the IT department had put together funding, it's been a lot of years since they wanted to do it, we just haven't had the, the staffing and the time to get it, and we're finally able to accomplish it. I don't want to speak for IT, but I don't believe that they would use those existing towers as like a signal beacon for the hotspots, I think they used the other cell towers that were actually leasing property and space to at our various campuses.
Okay, and, and.
Ma'am, I can jump in here if I, if I may.
Oh, certainly, yes.
So these towers initially were, were used with the old ATV program, which was, which was, has gone away, has been replaced, and as Mr. Rick and Barker said, these towers were old and in varying stages of repair, they wouldn't be suitable for any purposes for wireless access.
Okay, and along with that, I'm thinking it was the T-Mobile and Sprint that have joined, is that in any way going to help us as they expand their service, do we pick up from towers that, like theirs as well?
So we, we have the same level of coverage, they, they will merge, I, I do know they are merging and they are transitioning their equipment over, in terms of how it's going to affect the, the reception or those types of things, I'm, I'm not aware of any of that.
Okay, all right, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Rick and Barker. My other question would be about MM, and I, I totally understand and agree with the, with the concept as to what you did and what decisions were made, but one of the things that was stated is that, Mr. Gittens said, or, I'm not sure, but anyway, that community events are, they're looking at having community events to talk about changes, I honestly feel the community feels that these types of decisions and things would be so much better accepted and, and, you know, get behind them, if we had those community meetings before we started to build, having the building up and the walls up and everything already going on, the community feels as though, if you had these meetings afterwards, you're just telling us what you've already done and what you're already going to do, and in a little bit when I get into the Eastleigh Education Co-op, I can give some answers, some discussion on that as well to the board, but that's part of that communication piece that so many people in the community have said, we hear after it's already in place, and it's not asking us, what do you think about this, not that we're going to change everything because, you know, a few community members said so, but it gives them the, the feeling that they're being heard, we don't hear until after it's already done, it, it does create some issues, so in that vein.
Well, we can certainly, I mean, that decision necessarily, I don't, I don't think magically has happened, I mean, and then we did, do have this, you know, so, I mean, it could be walked back if that was the decision that we wanted to do.
And I'm not, I'm not asking you to walk it, I'm sorry, go ahead and finish, apologize.
The other thing is that honestly, you know, to be just blunt, COVID has really taken attention away from just about everything.
No, and I, I get that part, and for example though, if it was a decision to go ahead and name the new school Lambs and just keep the name, then we should just do that, I mean, if, if that was a decision, then why are we calling it MM, just call it Lambs and let people know that that's what's going to happen, it, it, it kind of feels like they're not being told until afterwards, and not saying that that's the case and not accusing anyone, this is basically just food for thought in saying, when you're doing a new project, something like that, let the community know as we go along that this is what we're doing. And at this point, and, and like I said, I'll talk more about it with the co-op, but it's already known that it's going to be Lambs, so why don't we just call it Lambs, we don't need the naming and brand opening thing, you know, it's already Lambs, and people could start to identify, you know, you talk about identifying with the new school and feeling comfortable, they could start identifying, this is going to be my new school, this is where I'm going, you know, in the fall, so just whatever it's worth, that's my two cents, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens, okay, and this time is 3:34, so we have about 26 minutes left and we still have some business to attend to. At this time I have two more questions, Ms. Juvenelli and Mrs. Vaughn, then we'll stop there and move on, Ms. Juvenelli?
Thank you, I actually would agree with Ms. Gittens, I mean, I, this is just part of being the transparency that we need for the community to really keep the buy-in, so it's really important that we are communicating every little bit of change we can, um, but my question actually was just an update on the Benita roof, and I can get that at a later date from Dr. Atkins, so it's, it's irrelevant, um, for now, it was just for community's sake, and I think that was, oh, oh, and I agree with, and actually, I agree with, actually, Ms. Morgan, if, if that, we had that, then that, my question would probably be answered, and that I wouldn't even have the question, so I agree with her, I would love to see like a schedule with, you know, and where it came from and what the plan is and everything, so I agree with what she recommended, and that's it, I'm
Are you finished, Ms. Juvenelli? Thank you, okay, Ms. Vaughn?
Well, I, perhaps I was dozing it at some point because I'd never heard about the Lambs and, you know, I mean, this is no reflection on what, or against it or whatever, but I, I guess I missed that communication, and I'm looking forward to Mrs. Gittens filling, filling us in from her perspective. The question I would have besides questioning if I was dozing or if we just didn't get that memo, the question I have is, I'm, I'm going to guess at this particular proposal, and I realize it's proposal still, an idea, how, does it sync well with our proximity? The whole proximity plan, is this, is this, I'm, I'm guessing it would be, but has, has that been reviewed by consultants for proximity?
I think one of the most important points here, again, is the, the difficulty that, that, I mean, I've watched it over the years, the, the struggle that people have, if you talk to Ms. Watson about it, it's very difficult to, to kind of compete equally from a student assignment perspective at, at that older facility at, at Lambs, and so that part of it was to try to assure equity across the zones and facilities among those middle schools, you know, I, I even remember, go back to my east, east days when I was in east zone operations, you know, feeling, feeling for the, the poor principal over at, at Lehigh Acres Middle and trying to compete with, you know, Veterans Park in terms of really getting that, that balance, that, that, but it's just very, very difficult to achieve, so this was an opportunity to do that. I do think that our proximity-based student assignment system, and I know, you know, Dr. Savage is like just biting, chomping at the bit to be able to share even with me, the latest from Davis demographics in terms of what it's going to be able to do to, I think, improve equitable educational experiences across the district, so, and, and I, you know, I certainly apologize for, for not, it's just, you know, I'm just sorry, I can't think of, remember everything, but I need to get to the board sometimes, and I thought we had had that conversation because we were having it openly, but we'd never, we're not at a point where we have brought this to the point where we were going to brief it and get approval on it, you know, from the board, because that's why you're still calling it MM, because that's what it is, it is MM, and, you know, that, that official proclamation has not been made yet, but I think conceptually, I think it's a great idea, I think it's going to help us moving forward, and so, that's all I have.
We used to, I'm sorry, you're pausing, I was going to say, didn't we used to have in, in our board updates, I, I remember a lot of, you know, different departments would update, so maybe that's something moving forward that operations can, can keep in mind when there's, even, even though it's not anything etched in, in stone, as, as I said, I guess I didn't watch something or do something, but it's.
I don't think we had the conversation.
It, it would be, and, and I understand how, how many, think everybody is responsible for now, but, yeah, I would have liked to have known before it was brought up here like this.
A couple things, just to kind of address what Dr. Atkins is saying and what Board Member Vaughn was saying, so this is, again, I was kind of referencing, this is definitely a cross-divisional project, so while operations is in charge of putting the shovel in the ground and Scott's here and can speak to all those aspects of it, planning, you know, not having a planning department, then having a planning department, that's where a lot of that proactive, strategic, long-term thinking, engagement with the various municipal interests, then of course, school development, student assignment, all the various hands in it, and then the newest one, which is really about managing that engagement and strategic engagement sense, I, I mentioned Mr. Malloy, a fantastic opportunity to get that engagement happening, so that when concepts come to the table here, that they are just concepts and they have an opportunity to be more, you know, vetted with the community, think through a lot of the different, you know, that's broad strokes conversation around that piece, some of those particular challenges. Now, just to address the proximity side of this as well, one of the very obvious things that I'm sure people realize is, as we've uncovered in the, the proximity, we have a lot of families that live out in Lehigh, and it isn't just middle schoolers, it's also elementary and high schoolers, we have a ton of families out in Lehigh, so many so that we, in our current choice environment, we actually bring a significant number of them into town, into the city of Fort Myers, when they come to James Stevens and they come to, you know, Manatee and they come to Dunbar High, so you actually have a lot of Lehigh families having to come into our, our, a different jurisdiction even, or into, you know, the city to accommodate all that growth, and so there is a substantial need out there, and one of the benefits of the proximity is you start to move more towards that community-based schooling concept and really trying to make sure that schools are there to address the actual legitimate bodies right there, is this concept around the proximity that this project would also help with, by Veterans Park is highly selected, so they fill up on first batch, and by being able to broaden this, you potentially could pick up some additional elementary school seats, which is challenging because elementary schools, they, while they, they're, they're also quite overloaded out there, and so I just want you to know that all those things, we can't, in this environment, can't go to all the lengths of it, there's just countless staff meetings to try to work through a lot of those individual things, but the, the lead in this, from a communication standpoint, is to engage, and that's Mr. Malloy, and working across divisions, you know, again, it was an idea from school development, so you're bringing all those divisions together, it isn't something where Scott at the outset, when he was told to go build a school, had any inkling ever that, that it might be the new Lambs, that certainly was not the case back then, so, you know, he can't answer that because it simply wasn't part of his purview, it just wasn't even in the remote consideration at that time, but as things go, they do evolve, and ideas come up, concepts come up, they get vetted through internally and with the community and with the board, so we hear you, it's a, you know, it is a challenge, to echo what Dr. Atkins was saying earlier, but hopefully we'll be able to answer more questions as we go on, and it's a lot easier to provide even more updates when we are so focused on the COVID, as he said, which has certainly absorbed a great deal of our time and energy with our updates.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, could you unmute, please?
At this time is 3:43 and we have Mrs. Patricia and Ms. Jordan with their hands up, and we still have the Eastleigh County, oh, and Scott, I think you still have your change, your capital change order memo, right?
If, if there's any questions, you all should have received that, I'll be glad to answer the change order, but usually you don't have any.
Okay, all right, so that being said, we'll move on to Ms. Patricia quickly.
Yeah, my comment is actually about the Eastleigh County thing, because you know that I have a hard stop and I have to leave, so I just, in the event I have to drop off of the meeting, I want to offer my advance support for that and urge my colleagues to give it a thumbs up, I, I know I can't vote if I'm not here, but if I were here, I would give it a thumbs up unless Ms. Gittens is going to say something crazy that I don't expect that she's going to say, I support it, I think it's fantastic to start to move this stuff out into the east part of the county and other parts of the county, so those are my comments, thank you, and I'm sorry I have to leave.
And thank you, we appreciate your patience, thank you, and Ms. Jordan?
Okay, just really quick, I just wanted to say, Ms. Vaughn, you were not sleeping, we did receive information, so in Dr. Atkins' defense, he, they are definitely getting the information out to us, and it came back in June, so I, it was something that I had read and then I questioned what I had read, so I just wanted to clarify that for, for you, so you were not sleeping, and they did send it out, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan, okay, so any questions for Mr. Rick and Barker regarding change order? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Rick and Barker, you got one of my favorite high schools. Good afternoon, thank you, okay, moving right along, we're good in the order.
Um, I haven't done the Eastleigh yet, are we going to skip that?
No, that's exactly what this is, it's.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought it was on the agenda as an item, so, okay.
Yes, okay.
Are you ready for me to start?
I, yes, unless Dr. Atkins has, has anything to profess with. Dr. Atkins, unmute.
I thought you could read my lips, I just said, oh, I don't, I don't have anything.
I'm beginning to learn how to do that, thank you, okay, Ms. Gittens, take it away. Okay, all right, I have one question, and then I will go into that, and it'll be quick because we've covered a lot of it in discussion, when Ms. made the suggestion about the list and all of projects, my question is, and it's rhetorical, you can get it later, how would that be different from the half-cent sales tax updates, is that different, or can that be combined at, you know, just one list or whatever, so that's what I had to say about that. Now, on to the Eastleigh Education Co-op, and the way it, we got our, our name, we, as you had heard before, we were looking at doing something similar to what Astero was doing with their MOU, as we got a group of community people and district people together and the superintendent, and had our first meeting, we realized that. and had our first meeting, we realized that it is different. We are a different entity, we have a different socioeconomic status, et cetera. So we decided that co-op is more conducive to the group that we have because a co-op, everyone owns a part of it, and that was the part that stood out. So everyone's participation, whether they're district or a community leader or a parent that's on the committee, everybody owns a part of it, and it kind of goes into, it takes the village. This is our starting of how that village can really work together to get things done. I want to say to the superintendent, I, I get it, I hear you, and no, you can't, you're only one person, you cannot remember and think about doing everything. That's where, at least in the East Zone, the Eastleigh Education Co-op wants to step in to help with that. I've been updating my community, and I do Facebook Lives, and I do all kinds of things to keep them involved and keep them updated. And let me just say too, Ms. Jordan has begun to do the same thing. And as I've always said, if it's a good idea, everybody can pick it up, do it to help their own community. So this corporate, this co-op, there are teachers, there are parents, there are different demographic as to Hispanic and English and, who else? Community business owners and just people that are interested in helping our community. And what we have done so far, after our first meeting, we talked about, you know, what do we want to do, and who are we, and what do we want to accomplish? And basically, our accomplishment each meeting is to speak with someone from the district or the community that has something to do with education, and we present them with, okay, here's our concerns. We'll have one or two things that are concerns, and we'd like you to come and speak to us. Not the, the typical where we sit there for 40 minutes and you tell us all the wonderful things you're doing, but, because we pretty much know that. What we want to know is, here's our issues, and how can you help us understand, or we help you to understand better as to how to resolve those issues? So we have had, we had Trey Davis, because our first discussion was about digital, the digital divide, because it, it really does hurt the students and the families in this zone more than anywhere else. And he gave us an update, we asked questions, we talked about ways to better communicate. Well, some of the things that, that came out of that and with the superintendent and his staff, for example, sending out this survey, it wasn't just on Peach Jar or on the website, they sent out letters, and to follow up, they're going to have the schools do the follow-up. So that was something that kind of, kind of came out of that group as well. How do we get to the people that we're not reaching? And then we had HR, and one of the main questions in HR is that in this area, it tends to be a training zone, where people come into the district and they will, it's like if you can make it out here for two years or a year, then we'll put you somewhere where it's a lot, you know, better for you. So our question was, how do we become that place that people want to come and people want to stay, and not just the training ground or the waiting ground while you're going somewhere else? We talked about, you know, the housing situation, and, and the fact that we, you know, we've got cheaper housing out here for people than in most of the other zones, but we have a plethora of people that work out here and live somewhere else. And, you know, how do we fix that? So we've put, and at the end of each meeting, we also come up with actionable items. What can we in the community or the district or together do to fix this problem? Not that by the next meeting it's going to be fixed, but here are some actionable items that we can use as a village to get this done for the students of our zone. So then, meeting, we have Dr.'s Spiro coming to talk about the achievement gap and to talk about academics and how we can help, you know, improve that, what can we do? Ideas that came up were like during this time of, of COVID and kids not being in school, the idea of having parents volunteer to help get the schools ready, or to help read to kids, or help mentor students because it's an issue for a lot of our students. So those are the kinds of things that come out of the, the group. And like I said, there's no contractual agreement because we are not a financial group trying to raise money. At some time, what we're looking at eventually is when we get all of these actionable items and we get a concrete list, then different people on the group, on the committee, then will head up each of those areas and be able to work and make sure that those things continue on to fruition. So, that's only reading twice, that was basically an overview of what the Eastleigh Education Co-op is. We have meetings on Zoom, and it's worked out quite well. And thank you, Darryl, Darryl has been everything from our tech to our secretary from times. And we also have a Facebook page, because we talked at one meeting about communicating to the community, and we're working with the schools in doing that as well. And if you want to learn more about what we are, are and what we have done, our meetings have been recorded, and you can go through and watch them to see the discussions. The one on the building of the new middle school and all was, was a lively discussion, but questions that the community wanted to know, and we're working through it. Not that all of the things have been resolved and all the answers are done, but we're on the way, and people are excited about it. And I constantly get people wanting to join the committee, but we're trying to keep it small in the beginning and then expand as we get moving orders. So that's kind of where we're at. And one of the things too is, I heard someone say earlier about zone attractors. And that's, if we're going to do proximity, the, the folks on this group have talked about, then we need zone attractors. For example, like what's happening at MMM, that's a good example of how we can do that. So anyway, that's kind of it in a nutshell, and I'm open for questions.
And, and Ms. Gittens, do you have an ask for us, or are you just ready to have a conversation?
I would like to have the board behind us on this, and to have, you know, to be able to say, this is something that's happening in the East Zone, this is something that's happening in South Zone, whatever. I would like to be, you know, representative in, in a, in a sense of the board. The community members are dedicated and, and set to continue to, to work however we have to work. I would like to do it in conjunction with the board. And I'm glad you asked that, because the other premise of this, like I mentioned before, is in our strategic plan, we took specifically from increasing family and community involvement, which for all the years that I've been involved with the Lee County School District has always been a challenge. So if there's something that we can do, and then, you know, multiply and have other zones, if you want to know what we did and how we did it, I'm totally open to, to have you sit in on a meeting or watch the meetings online on the Facebook page, or ask me whatever questions. If we duplicate and multiply these types of efforts, it's helpful to the whole district and all of our children.
And thank you for that, and, and I do like the way you included the strategic plan and the connection with the co-op in your backup material. So at this time, we have two hands raised, and I'll begin with Ms. Jordan.
Thank you, no, I, I think this is really a, a good, positive thing to have. I, I, the only question I did have, Ms. Gittens, is who is the ownership of it? Like who owns this? So is it the, the school district is the one who owns it? Or is it the cooperative, which consists of a board? That actually is, do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, it's, it's more, that's why we didn't want like a hard contract type thing. But I, you know, we have discussed that, basically, it's the community group that's trying to help our students and education, and help the district to achieve the goals that are going to help all of us and all of our children.
Right, but someone was asking, who's in charge? Because it's like when it says "we," who is the?
That's why the, the, the concept of a co-op, a co-op means, it, it's kind of like, instead of a bank, it's a, what do you call it, the, like?
Credit union.
A credit union, yes. Where everybody has a piece of it, and everybody has a say, and everybody has a part. And if everyone doesn't do their part, the whole thing crumbles. And the co-op, and I, I think the beauty of it is, Ms. Jordan, that we don't have like a head of this or a head of that. It is a co-op, and everybody's ideas and thoughts and, and rolling up their sleeves will help make it better for everyone else.
Perfect, thank you.
And so, Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, I, I, I think it's a great idea, especially since Lehigh Acres doesn't have a systemic core. You know, I mean, there always was a core, Astero, Benita, even though way back when it was teeny tiny, I guess even Alva. But, yeah, I, I think this gives more coherence to Lehigh Acres.
And can I stop you one quick second?
Yeah, not just Lehigh, it goes from, we have members from Alva all the way to Lehigh.
Okay, okay.
It's the East Zone as a whole, because there's.
Okay, so it's all of the East Zone?
It is all of the, well, the East Zone that, in, in my district, the area, so.
Okay.
I don't know how to divide it off, but it does go from Alva all the way to Lehigh.
Yeah, okay, what, I do have a suggestion, and I'm not, I've noticed this forever, I guess because I'm a wordsmith kind of person. Drop the word "out." Do you notice, okay, when Dr. Savage was speaking, he goes, "Out there in Lehigh, Lehigh, you flip it, out." No, start saying, "Here in Lehigh Acres," not "Out here in Lehigh Acres." That's my suggestion, and, and to me, you know, maybe some people don't even notice it, but I've noticed it for years, actually.
And that's, that's a very good comment, and I, and I will take that to heart and take it to the group, because some of the people in our initial meeting talked about feeling left out.
Well, yeah, and if you get rid of it, yeah.
And trying to get rid of it. I mean, we still, we have to face facts, we still have, you know, well over a thousand headed toward that are still not in permanent classroom seats. So, you know, when, and, and that's way, way, way above every other area in the district. So, well, it'll get fixed, and things will happen, and schools will get built, and, and students will have permanent seats and not in the, not in the portable. It's, it's, I mean, we're just there to kind of help it and make sure it does happen sooner than.
Maybe the next board meeting, I'll keep a little scratch sheet, and if somebody says, "Out there," I'm gonna, and I'll say, "Seventeen times," that's, that's my comment.
Tick, 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 thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn, that was a good comment, and, and Mrs. Morgan?
No, I just want to say, I, I love the idea, I love what you're doing, and I, and I piggyback what Ms. Vaughn said, which is, you're, you're giving, you're providing some substance, some focal point for the community, and I think that's terrific. So, good for you, it reads like a great plan, and, and, thank you.
Thank you. Great, thank you, and, and again, you know, family and community engagement has long been a part of our strategic plan, and this, this is excellent. And I really like the chart with the areas of highest impact and how, how it works. I think you've done a great job, I, I do support it. And I, I, I know that the work you've done in your community has been one of advocacy, and I appreciate that as a colleague of yours. And so now I have Mrs. Giavanelly with her hand up.
I'll be real quick too, I support it too, I think it's a great, Lehigh sometimes gets left out, so I'm excited that you are not doing that, and you're actually bringing it to the table. So thank you, I think it's, it's a great opportunity for, for Lehigh, and thank you.
Awesome, and you can send us your Facebook address, or whatever the name of it is. Thank you. Any other comments, board members? Okay, so, bit with that, it is 4:03, so we're not too badly over. And if there are no other questions and no other business and no one else has any comments, Ms. Jo, Ms. Jordan?
Sorry, I thought was, were, were we not supposed to agree upon Ms. Gittens being the liaison? I thought the purpose of this coming to good of the order, is that correct?
Well, yes, Mrs., Attorney D.C. Bruno is shaking her head yes. So I have a verbal word of support from Mrs. Patricia before she left the meeting, and I have six checks from the rest of us. So I'm thinking that we are all in agreement and supporting Ms. Gittens with this effort to increase community and parent engagement, and to help improve her East Zone community. So, do we need to do anything official, Ms. Bruno?
I just want to make sure that we have the consensus properly, so if we could just go ahead and get the thumbs up, so we can.
Thumbs up, okay. So it looks like it's unanimous, and six of us with Mrs. Patricia leaving her word with us before. So, so then, Dr. Atkins, did you have anything else?
No, ma'am, that, that was all, I'm glad that the board is supportive of her initiative. This is something that we had hoped to, to get going, you know, with Benita being kind of the start, and, and so we're happy that it's moved to the Lehigh, Eastleigh County community.
Absolutely, that's, that's what teamwork is all about. And seeing no other business to come before this board, I will call this meeting adjourned, and we will see you all tomorrow morning at our workshop.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.